Good afternoon, buenas tardes, and welcome to the July 18th Board Business Meeting. Welcome to our board members, MCPS staff, and members of our community who are joining us here today in person, and those who are watching this meeting via livestream. Now let us begin the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll to establish that we have a quorum, starting with Mr. Say, Mr. Sorry, habit, I do that a lot.
Present and excited to be at my very first open session board meeting.
Mr. Pranil Savarna, excuse me.
Good afternoon, Shebra Evans, District 4, good to see everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone, Lynn Harris, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm an at-large member of the board.
Good afternoon, Buenas tardes, Grace Rivera Ove, representing District 1.
Good afternoon, Julie Yang, District 3, I'm happy to be here.
Good afternoon, Brenda Wolf, District 5.
Thank you, everyone, and now we can begin the meeting with the approval of the revised agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous with those present. Okay, now we are moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, Human Resources and Development. Can I get a motion to pass the OHRD report?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous with those present. I pass it on to Dr. Taylor for the two resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President, there are two resolutions that I'm presenting to the board this afternoon. Whereas the death on May 12th, 2024 of Mrs. Panthea R. Mitchell, kindergarten teacher at Greencastle Elementary School, has saddened staff, students, and members of the Board of Education. And whereas during her 29-plus years of service to Montgomery County Public Schools, Mrs. Mitchell consistently showcased a deep understanding of how her work positively impacted student success. She was acknowledged for her professionalism, respect, and kindness in her interactions with students, parents, and school staff. And whereas Mrs. Mitchell ensured that students arrived at school ready to learn by providing a positive and safe learning environment, she always maintained a kind and positive attitude, making students feel safe and welcome. This contributed to their happiness, relaxation, and preparedness for the school day. Mrs. Mitchell's efforts positively impacted her students' well-being and readiness to learn, and now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express their sorrow at the death of Mrs. Mitchell and extend deepest sympathies to her family, and may it further be resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the family of Mrs. Mitchell.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam President. Our second resolution, whereas the death on May 26th, 2024 of Ms. Leslie Wegol Medwitzke, paraeducator at Keshel Elementary School, has saddened staff, students, and the members of the Board of Education. And whereas during the four-plus years of service at Montgomery County Public Schools, Ms. Wegol Medwitzke made significant contributions to create a positive work and learning environment. Her caring and supportive demeanor made her students feel comfortable and valued in her classroom. And whereas Ms. Wegol Medwitzke was a highly dedicated paraeducator who worked tirelessly for the success of her students, her unwavering commitment to create a positive and secure educational environment has had a significant impact on her students, colleagues, and the community. And now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express their sorrow at the death of Ms. Wegol Medwitzke, and extend our deepest sympathy to her family, and may it further be resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the family of Ms. Wegol Medwitzke.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous with those present. Thank you, moving on to Item 3.2, Recommended Appointments.
Thank you, Madam President, this is an exciting part of our presentation today, and I would ask that when your name is called, if you could please stand to be recognized as we say some wonderful things about our new leaders in MCPS. And this afternoon, we're going to begin with Erica R. Porter, our new Director of School Support and Improvement. Ms. Porter has 21 years of educational experience both in the classroom and in administration. She is thrilled to return to MCPS where it all began to bring her experiences and dedication back to this community. Ms. Porter looks forward to working with everyone to enhance the well-being and support of our students, school leaders, teachers, and families. And we want to give some shout-outs to her children, Jason and Jana, and Lena, her Aunt Vicky Thurston, and to all of her friends and family that are watching online, let's give her a hearty round of applause.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous with those present, congratulations.
Yeah, we gave you a little bit of premature applause there, that one's my bad. It's a rookie move on my behalf, I apologize. Next up is Dr. Michael J. Zarchin, Director of the Office of School Improvement and School Support and Improvement. Joining him today is his wife Cindy, an MCPS teacher at Cloverly Elementary School, his son Brooks, and daughter Logan. Dr. Zarchin has more than 33 years' experience in education, both in the classroom and administration, with 28 of those in MCPS. Most recently, Dr. Zarchin has served as the Acting Director in the Office of School Support and Improvement. He is excited to continue his career with MCPS in the school district where he and his two children attended school, and where his wife teaches. Shout-outs to his parents, Mike and Sue Zarchin, and his in-laws Chuck and Pam Brooks, who are watching online.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous, congratulations.
She's not with us this afternoon, but we're delighted to announce Ms. Jessica Boone, the Director of ADA Compliance in the Department of Compliance and Investigations in the Office of Human Resources and Development. Ms. Boone brings more than 14 years of investigative and legal experience to MCPS. She looks forward to continuing in the Department of Compliance and Investigation, where she will work to foster a culture of ethical behavior, proactive risk management, and continuous improvement, protecting MCPS and the community by empowering our employees and building trust amongst all our stakeholders. Shout-outs to her children Mason and Amir, who are watching as well.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous, congratulations.
And I'll ask Mrs. Diane Gomez to please stand, our up-for-director of the Division of School Resource and Financial Support in the Office of Finance, in the Office of the Chief Financial Officer. Joining her today is her husband Juan. Mrs. Gomez has been employed with MCPS for 27 years as a teacher, student support specialist, assistant principal, and most recently as a supervisor for school and financial operations team. She looks forward to continuing her work in the Office of Finance to provide quality customer service to schools and offices and ensure equity of resource distribution for our schools. Shout-outs to her parents, her sisters, her work team, and her church group who are here or watching online.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous, congratulations.
It's my pleasure to ask Ms. Erica W. Williams to please rise, up for the Director of the Division of Special Education Pre-Kindergarten Programs and Services, in the Department of Special Education Services, in the Office of Special Education, in the Office of the Chief Academic Officer. We'll try to get that all on one business card for you. Joining her today is her husband Jaren, her son Jaren, and daughter Sloan. Ms. Williams has been employed with MCPS for 18 years as a speech-language pathologist, an assistant principal, principal intern, and most recently as a principal at Fields Road Elementary School. She looks forward to joining the Office of Special Education to support our youngest learners and students with disabilities. Shout-outs to her sister, her father, and his wife, who are also in the audience.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous, congratulations.
I'd like to invite Mrs. Ashley S. Doyle to please rise. Ms. Doyle, oh, and I apologize, she's attending virtually this evening. Ms. Doyle is up for Supervisor of Alternative Learning Outcomes in the Department of Special Education Services, in the Office of Special Education, in the Office of the Chief Academic Officer. Mrs. Doyle has been employed with MCPS for 16 years as a special education teacher, instructional specialist, and most recently as the Acting Supervisor in the Department of Special Education Services. She looks forward to continuing her work with the Department of Special Education as the Supervisor of Alternative Learning Outcomes. Shout-outs to her husband Benjamin and twin sons Sebastian and Theodore, and to her family, friends, and colleagues for their guidance and support.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous, congratulations.
It's a pleasure to introduce Ms. Hope L. McGuire for the Supervisor in the Community Schools Department of Student Engagement, Behavioral Health, and Academics Office of Well-Being and Learning and Achievement in the Office of School Support and Improvement. Ms. McGuire has been employed with MCPS for three years as a program manager, and most recently as coordinator in the Department of Student Engagement, Behavioral Health, and Academics. She looks forward to joining her community school team to continue the work focusing on the students, families, and communities dismantling barriers to optimal success. Shout-outs to her children, Celine, Jordan, and Gideon, and to the MCPS community school staff, leaders, and partners for their support.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous, congratulations.
Madam President, the next group are our principals, and it's an exciting time to be stepping into the principalship as we get ready to start the new school year, just less than 40 days to go, team, just heads up. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Nicole M. Walker, Principal for Westland Middle School. Joining her today is her husband Solomon Walker Jr., her uncle and aunt, Dr. Aaron and Mrs. Patricia Gresen, and Mr. John Taylor, Principal at Winston Churchill High School. Mrs. Walker has been employed with MCPS for 17 years as a counselor, resource counselor, academy coordinator, assistant school administrator, assistant principal, principal intern, and most recently as an assistant principal at Winston Churchill High School. Mrs. Walker is excited to join and lead the Westland Wildcat community. Shout-outs to her bonus children and her grandchildren in Virginia and North Carolina, her dad, brothers, and extended family in Pennsylvania, and her in-laws in South Carolina. She would also like to thank Dr. Campbell, Mr. Taylor, Mrs. Diane Harrison, and everyone who has supported her and mentored her throughout the years.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous, congratulations.
I'm pleased to introduce Cassandra E. Hifetz, up for Principal of Ritchie Park Elementary School. Joining her today is her husband Adam, an MCPS teacher at Eastern Middle School. Ms. Hifetz has been employed with MCPS for 25 years as a teacher, media specialist, assistant principal, principal intern, principal, dean, and most recently as a supervisor in the Department of Special Education Services. She looks forward to building relationships with the Ritchie Park students, staff, and families, and collaborating with all staff and families to promote equity, high expectations, and excellence for every student. Shout-outs to her family, her children, Moira and Caleb, who inspire and cheer her on every day, and to her MCPS family of mentors and colleagues, and to the Department of Special Education Services for their incredible support and encouragement.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous, congratulations.
I'm pleased to reintroduce back to our community Mr. J.W. Lee, Principal at Rock Creek Valley Elementary School. Joining him today is his wife Anna and their daughters Savannah and Nora. Mr. Lee has more than 17 years of experience in the education field as a teacher and as an administrator. He looks forward to returning to MCPS and joining Rock Creek Valley Elementary School as principal to support and serve the community. Shout-outs to his parents, Young and Miyoung Lee, who are also in the audience this evening.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous, congratulations.
Our last recommended appointment for this evening is Ms. Tamisha, excuse me, Tamisha L. Sampson, Principal of William B. Gibbs Junior Elementary School. Ms. Sampson is returning to MCPS, bringing more than 24 years of educational experience in the classroom and working in administration. She looks forward to working collaboratively with the staff, students, and families at William B. Gibbs Junior Elementary School to foster and support a supportive and enriching learning environment. Shout-outs to her husband Leon, her children Austin and Ava, and to her friends and colleagues.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous, congratulations. Is that our final appointment?
That concludes recommended appointments this evening.
Okay, we'll give them a moment to transition. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 4, Recognitions, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President, we have two really significant recognitions that we want to share with our community. The first one is our retirees, and we have a short resolution that we would like to share, recognizing our retirees. Appropriate for me to read the resolution, yeah. Whereas the individuals on the attached list are retiring or have retired from Montgomery County Public Schools, and whereas each individual through outstanding performance of duties and dedication to education and to our youth has made a significant contribution to the school system, which is worthy of special commendation, and now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express their sincere appreciation to each individual for faithful service to the school system and the children of the county, and also extend to each retiree best wishes for the future, and may it further be resolved that a copy of this resolution is published on the Employee and Retiree Service Center webpage and available to each retiree.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous.
Thank you, Madam President. Our second recognition that we would like to share this evening is a resolution about our Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity scholars, of which we have several, and I believe they'll be listed and shown in just a moment. Our resolution is as follows, whereas the Gaithersburg-Rockville Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, Kappa Youth and Community Foundation, has awarded nine scholarships to Montgomery County Public Schools students. And whereas the Gaithersburg-Rockville Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, Kappa Youth and Community Foundation's primary focus is to provide opportunities for young students who dream of going to college and making that a reality. And whereas the Gaithersburg-Rockville Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated and Kappa Youth and Community Foundation is committed to providing encouragement and support to young African-American students so that they may see a future for themselves that includes a college education. And whereas the Montgomery County Board of Education is proud that Montgomery County Public Schools continues to celebrate the many accomplishments of its diverse student body and its community partners, now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Superintendent of Schools, staff members, students, and parents and guardians... of Schools, staff members, students, and parents and guardians of Montgomery County Public Schools, the Montgomery County Board of Education congratulates the class of 2024 Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, Kappa Youth and Community Foundation Scholarship recipients.
Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes our special recognitions.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is public comments. Public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, program, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of address for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Those who demonstrate disruptive or disrespectful behavior during public comments may be asked to leave the room. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. We have seven, 19 people signed up to provide testimony today. For the in-person testimony, each speaker will receive two minutes for comments. When your name is called, please approach the table, speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thirty seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Push the same button once more at the sound of the buzzer to turn it off. In addition to our in-person speakers today, we have seven people signed up to provide video and audio testimonies. We will play these submissions once the in-person testimonies have concluded. Copies of testimonies can be found on our website on Board Docs where they are posted with other materials for this meeting. At this time, if we can get our first, please, please get our first six speakers to come forward. Connor Tucker, Luka Sarachovich, David Stein, Bridget Howe, Basmat Parsad, and Andrea McDonald.
Okay, Connor Tucker, you may begin.
Good afternoon. I am a fourth grade MVA student. For months, my family and I begged you to find a way to fund the school. I listened to everything because this is very important to me. But as a nine-years-old child, I feel very sad and confused because nothing seemed to change your mind to help us. I cried a lot when all of you waved your hand to call the MVA. I was so disappointed at the last hearing when no BOE person said anything to us. Even though people begged and cried, this made me feel like we did not matter to you. But Dr. Taylor made me feel like we mattered when he met with us. So my brother and I are very stressed out because my family still does not know where to send us in fall. We can't do in-person school or home school. Private virtual schools with live classes are very expensive, and they are not as good as the MVA. So please tell us what you plan to do now. It can't be too late to find a way to provide virtual learning for us. My family moved here because they said has the best schools. So I am confused why you can't get such a small amount of money to fund the school. This is important to many of us. Our education is worth more than just a few million dollars. Other places have virtual schools, so why not the MCPS? Thank you.
Thank you. Luka Sarachovich, may begin.
Good afternoon, Dr. Taylor, members of this board. On June 11th, this board adopted the 2025 fiscal year budget. In that budget, a number of alarming cuts were made from the 2024 budget. One huge consequence of these cuts were an increase in class sizes. While the increase of one student per class may not seem large, it opens the gates to a decrease in student learning and a step in the wrong direction. The size of classes are already large. In fact, in my own school, BCC, many core classes such as math and English are already packed to the brim. This leads to less attention being given to students in class, which leads to students lacking behind their peers, especially students that require more hands-on instruction. While the average number of students in classes are relatively low, those numbers don't reflect the actual reality of classes that many of my peers and I experience. Particularly in honors and AP classes, the number of students often reaches the maximum number of 33. This leads many of my peers to not receive the personalized attention that they need when trying to further their education and learning experience here in MCPS. One anecdote that a peer talked to me about was when their AP history class had 33 students in it. This many students made it almost impossible for any student to get personalized attention from the teacher. This made the already challenging class that much harder for them and every student in that class. Students who take these harder classes shouldn't be penalized for doing so. They should have the resources needed to succeed and thrive in these classes, and that starts with smaller class sizes. With students in our county needing more attention to succeed, not less, I ask this board to correct this issue in the 2026 fiscal year budget, if not sooner, and give these students in this county the attention and support they need to succeed. Let's take a step in the right direction as a county, not the wrong one. Thank you.
Thank you. David Stein, you may begin.
Hello, Dr. Taylor, Professor, President Silvestri and the Board of Education. I've testified at this table before, but today I do so as the first time as the leader of MCEA and the 14,000 hard-working educators of MCPS. We have serious challenges ahead, and MCEA is ready and eager to work with the administration and the board to find solutions. However, when we believe our voices are not being heard, we will be unapologetically loud in our advocacy for students and educators. Our learning and working conditions need to be dramatically improved. We must solve the planning time problem, particularly at the elementary level. We need to reduce the paperwork burden on our special and general educators. We must meet our contract's promises for realistic caseloads and ratios for counselors and others. We need to reduce the testing burden on our EML and other students. We need to stop macro-managing and treat all educators as the professionals that they are. Now, many of these problems can be addressed at the bargaining table, and we are looking for a partner there who is ready to work with us. But beyond the table, we must improve worksite morale. Climate surveys must be taken seriously, and we should focus on those buildings where the surveys show serious problems. Now, we have seen progress worth applauding. We are pleased that we are two years ahead of the blueprint statutory requirement for starting salaries. But that requirement is a double-edged sword, as neighboring counties will soon catch up with us. And with the cost of living so high in Montgomery County, we will need to increase the scales to retain and recruit educators. This year, we must establish a transparent budget process. We hear this demand from all corners of our community. We need a system where we can openly lay out our priorities and specify how they'll be achieved. And above all, we cannot afford to repeat the debacle of last year when a superintendent proposed a pair-bones budget, the board proposed additional fundings, but the executive and council placed that revised budget on the chopping block, leaving many of us deeply frustrated and angry with a budget that failed to fully meet our community's needs. Let's transparently pass a budget this year, one that demonstrates our commitment to our shared values. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget Howe?
Good afternoon, Board members and Dr. Taylor. My name is Bridget Howe, and I'm here today as President of the Montgomery County Council of PTAs. Rather than focus on a specific issue today, we're using our time to welcome Dr. Taylor back to MCPS. Dr. Taylor, I suspect that when you were an MCPS student, you probably weren't paying a whole lot of attention to the PTA. I know I wasn't, so I thought I'd give you some context. MCCPTA is the county's largest parent organization with members representing nearly 200 MCPS PTAs. This year, we celebrate 80 years of promoting the engagement of families and educators in the education of children and living our mission to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Our power comes from the energy of our members who devote countless hours to supporting individual schools and to working towards solutions on the system's level. Name an educational issue, and no matter how complex or mundane it is, I can tell you there is an MCCPTA member who cares. When we look holistically at the issues our members are passionate about, they include high-quality educational experiences that ready students for thriving futures by meeting their individual needs and preparing them for careers in college; the physical and mental well-being and safety of children, staff, and community members in our schools; operational efficiency of the school system based on responsible use of community's tax dollars with an emphasis on transparency and accountability; and of course, fundamental to every concern we advocate about is a recognition of the value of our diverse community and a commitment to equitable opportunities for all. We look forward to being your thought partner and accountability partner as you begin your tenure with MCPS. You can count on us to be candid, constructive, and committed to the best for the 160,000 and 25,000 students and 25,000 staff of the system. What we ask of you is to challenge the status quo, embrace candor, and enjoy leading this amazing school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Basmat Parsad. Please begin.
Good afternoon. I have two grandsons who enrolled in MVA from the start. For some time now, MVA families have been pouring their hearts out about why this learning environment is critical for meeting their kids' diverse needs. Now, after closing the school in a most disrespectful manner, MCPS is forcing us to choose learning options that cannot work. Tell me, if bullying in in-person school made your kids develop a neurological condition, would you send him back there, especially after you see how MVA transformed and helped him thrive in every way? As a psychologist and education researcher, I am deeply aware of the long-term consequences of what you're asking my family to do, and we simply cannot. And our situation is just the tip of the iceberg compared to families with more serious medical needs. The issue now is how do we address the crisis we find ourselves in? Yes, we are disappointed and angry about BOE's lack of engagement, transparency, and support in the past. But we must move forward quickly and find the best way out for our kids. It is critical for MCPS to ensure that every student has access to the opportunities, resources, and educational rigor they need. Dr. Taylor, BOE members, that is the equity that MVA provides. So we are asking for a new iteration of MVA, using funds allocated to each student and supplemental funds as needed. MCPS created a stellar virtual school in just six weeks. It can do it again. Please tell us if you are open to this path or any other appropriate path forward for Fall 2025. And please don't go silent on us. It feels dehumanizing. Only last night, I was told by a BOE member that the superintendent is the person to make anything like this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea McDonald. May I begin?
Good afternoon. This board is not perfect. MCPS is not perfect, yet for some reason perfection was expected from the MVA. Why was that? Why was the MVA held to a standard that MCPS doesn't hold itself to? From our vantage point, MCPS was MVA's arsonist and firefighter in the sense that perfection was the expectation and nothingness was the support given. Then when trouble arose, the arsonists then put the fire out without taking any kind of accountability for their role in the process. I don't see this level of dissonance given to immersion programs, LGBTQ+ programs, and many more of the like within MCPS. Yet MVA was given stepchild treatment of the Cinderella kind from its inception. As a parent, I can attest to phoning district offices, identifying my child and their designation as an MVA student, and no one having the slightest clue what I was talking about. Further insult happened when a district administrator told me, "The only reason I'm calling you back today is because I was of the assumption that your child was attending in-person, not virtual." Or, "We're giving priority to those students that are in-person only." Couldn't find support from MCPS while my children attended the MVA. However, when the closure was announced, there was an overwhelming amount of support offered to help transition families back to in-person. Where were you all then? Where have you been? Thus sends a message clear as day. You never cared about the MVA, namely its students, teachers, or anyone directly under its umbrella. Instead, you treated us like specimens in a failed lab experiment that you poured gasoline on and torched. Once the outcome didn't reach perfection, you threw the lab away with everything in it. With that in mind, I'd like to remind you all that MVA students are Montgomery County residents and hence should be treated with the same diligence that MCPS prides itself on meeting out to all of its students. And yes, MVA was the most appropriate place for those students for a plethora of reasons. So today, I stand here before this board, calling upon you all to reinstate the MVA and work with us to improve and expand it so it can continue to be virtually the best in MCPS. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll ask our next six speakers to please come forward. Yolanda Belton, Kirabelle Fresenbet, Samira Hussain, Rama Thaher Sawali, Charmaine Parsad, and Brianna Rojas. Yolanda Belton, you may begin.
Hello. The creation of the MVA was a life-changing for hundreds of families. It gave an opportunity for those attending to receive a full education similar to their peers that could attend in-person school. Children that were afraid to attend in-person school felt safe learning in the comfort of their own homes. Children who couldn't physically be around their peers or enter a school building for a variety of reasons, including physical limitations, medical and emotional issues, et cetera, could now develop friendships with classmates and socialize just like they could at a traditional school setting. These children not only thrive socially but excel academically. They were able to receive supports not readily available in the in-person school setting. The MVA, the closing of the MVA takes away all of these things from all these vulnerable children. The alternatives given will not work for many families, including my own, and definitely will not be equivalent and offer everything that the MVA has. For you, it may just be a budget cut, but for these children, it's their livelihood, their future, their safety, their physical and mental well-being. It's crucial we find a way to fund the MVA. Not doing so will let these families down. Not doing so will take away a vital component to these children's success and well-being and take away the education that they deserve.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirabelle Fresenbet. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Dr. Taylor. Congratulations on your appointment. And congratulations, Board members, for your new seating arrangement that seems to show your relationship with the people you serve far away and looking us down. I'm here to ask you to understand that families of faith, as well as those who do not share values and attitudes about sexuality with certain Board members, are feeling discriminated against and disfranchised. Instead of preparing our children in MCPS for the age of AI, they are bombarded day in and day out with unproven theories of sexuality that are applauded by the LGBTQ community but rejected by the others. It's not our schools, it's not the school's job to affirm or reject sexuality. No human being should interfere, should interfere with parent's role in stealing identities, which includes sexuality. I urge you to treat every child and every family equally. It's not the school board's or the superintendent's job to arbitrate which sexual identities to affirm or reject. This approach is fundamentally flawed. Please rescind the school's family rejection policy of withholding information from parents. Such policies may lead to minors being vulnerable to abuse by strangers who could potentially blackmail them. Despite the presence of thousands of dedicated teachers and staff who are angels to their children, we must acknowledge that there are also sexual abusers within our school system. Do you truly believe that hiding a child's school record from a parent makes that child suffer in the presence of such individuals? Or is it preferable for you that a child to suffer molestation by a school staff member rather than receiving parental rather than receiving parental guidance regarding their gender identity that you don't agree with? I understand that regardless of undeniable logic presented here. Thank you.
Thank you. Samira Hussain, you may begin.
Dr. Taylor, Ms. Sylvester, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. My name is Samira Hussain. I'm a mother of four MCPS graduates, a community advocate, and recently retired me after serving over 30 years of services. I would like to start by welcoming Dr. Taylor and congratulating for the new position. I also welcome the new student member, Mr. Sivana. Today, I'm speaking again on the issues of safety of Palestinian Muslim and Arab students and their families. Many Palestinians' families are currently visiting the region, and when they return, they will have new experiences and new trauma to cope with. Would MCPS be prepared to provide mental health and wellness support to those who are in need? Palestinian families have been affected by the war, including the speaker. Once again, ADL does not represent the Arab, Muslim, or Palestinian population. Experts from those communities should be covering the education and providing the education factual information. As you know, most complaints reported by our students are against adults and administrators. One example, during the International Night of one of our own MCPS schools where students were given the opportunity to display their pride and cultural heritage, a second grader was sharing a poem written by a famous Palestinian poet, Mahmoud Darwish. While the child was reciting the poem on the stage, the adult person, who could be a parent, disrupted the moment shouting as the child saying something like, "Come on, people, we're not listening to this. This is a lie. Check the facts. Shame on you. There is no such a place called Palestine." No one intervened. No one did anything about it, including the administrators. It took a very courageous parent, several meetings, to have a meeting with the principal and MCPS officials about that. That should not happen. Thank you for your time. You have my full testimony. Please check the links I attached.
Thank you. Rama Thaher Sawali, please begin.
Good afternoon, members of the board, and I would like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Taylor. My name is Rama, and I am here today to address an urgent concern regarding the mental health of Palestinian students, Muslim students, Arab students, and other supporters of Palestine in our schools. The current global tensions and events have significantly increased stress and anxiety among our students. They face unique challenges, including a lack of cultural understanding and the understanding of their pain. This affects their emotional well-being and academic performance. To support our students, I propose the following actions. Number one, trained counselors and social workers. We need counselors and social workers who are culturally competent and trained to address specific mental health needs for Muslim, Palestinians, and Arab students. These professionals can provide essential support and create safe space where students can express their feelings without fear of judgment. Number two, staff training. Implement regular training programs for teachers and staff on culture competency and mental health issues specific to these students. Continuous professional development will ensure that our staff can effectively support all students. Number three, safe space. Establish dedicated rooms or areas within schools where students can go to feel safe and supported. Additionally, an anonymous reporting system can help students voice their concerns without fear of retaliation. Studies show that mental health support significantly improves academic performance and overall well-being. I urge the board to consider these proposals and take concrete steps toward implementing them. By doing so, we can create a supportive environment where all students can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Charmaine Parsad.
Good afternoon. Congratulations, Dr. Taylor and new student rep, Sivana. Having survived a few nearly impossible events in my life, I believe anything is possible. I believe it is possible to create a new MVA and allocate the poor pupil revenue to fund it and also ask for a small supplemental funding. This can be done. The original MVA was created just in six weeks. Many of MVA's awesome teachers have not yet been placed, and others may be willing to come back. MVA is a school, not a program. It provided quality and equitable education for a diverse vulnerable population, which you would have seen if you had taken the time to observe the amazing student engagement and performance. MVA provided accelerated courses for those who needed it, like my son. What is more unique is that it accomplished what in-person MCPS schools provide: a high-quality curriculum, full-day synchronous learning, clubs, meetups, and so on. Since the options MCPS offers is not possible for my kids, we have explored private schools. Nothing comes close to MVA, and costs for those with synchronous learning are at least $10,000 per child. For the first time, we do not feel invisible to BOE. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. So we respectfully ask for an open forum, which should have been given to us months ago to explore options for the fall. Time is not on our side. My family needs to make decisions very soon. The more I hear stories from other families, the more determined I am to keep fighting for our kids. Thanks in advance for your time and support.
Thank you. Brianna Rojas, you may begin.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I am Brianna Rojas, and I am here fighting for the MVA. The MVA is not a program. It's a school for all of us. On behalf of the 800 students plus the waiting list, I'm here to talk about the benefits of the MVA. You see, for the first time in the school, I have gotten honor roll. Me and my brothers, we thrived in the MVA. Please don't take this opportunity from us. And we respectfully ask you to please find a way to reinstate the MVA because, in reality, all of us are scared. I've been crying for months, and it has been very hard. Please find a way to save school. I'm so scared to go back. I can't go through the pain anymore. Please, Dr. Taylor, there's money to fund it. I really don't want to go back to school. Please, we beg you. Don't send us back to the building. Please reopen the MVA. I've been praying to God. I've been praying for months since day one so you guys can reopen it. I really beg you, please find a way to open it. We don't want to go through the same pain, all of the violence and the shooting. It scares me a lot. Please don't take the opportunity away from us. I heard classmates say that they are very scared to go back. We beg you, please fund it. Please help us, board members. We really don't want to go. Time is running out. Please hear our cries for help. We really don't want to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brianna, for your testimony. Thank you for all of you for your testimony. Our next speakers are via video. Arhat Saxena, please play the video.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Arhat Saxena, and I am a rising junior at Kennedy High School. I'm here today to talk about the issue of fine arts inequity within MCPS. I am part of the instrumental music program at Kennedy High School, and I also pursue musical interests outside of school. And I've started to notice the big lack of equity in regards to funding and support for fine arts programs in MCPS. For instance, at Kennedy High School, there is no theater program at all. And last year, there was no choral program. They simply did not exist. And this is very shocking to me, considering that I am well aware of many middle and high schools that have vibrant arts programs. There are some schools that even go on to produce three shows a year and have various showcases to promote art and lots of performances by their concert band and orchestra. Yet, in my school, it feels as if teachers are struggling to even fund the programs or get them off the ground, and many times, they're simply missing because there's not enough resources, support, or money to get them going. This message that is being sent to students that where you live determines the quality of education you get within this department, or the fact that fine arts are often the first department to be cut from the budget, really does imply that MCPS doesn't value the arts enough, despite the fact that now more than ever, in the aftermath of a global pandemic where schools have suffered a lot from the effects of COVID, we need to be prioritizing the arts and showing that we truly care about our students and we want to give them the quality education they deserve. To solve this issue, I highly suggest that MCPS look into creating equitable funding for arts programs and really bolstering them and providing kids the support they need, but more importantly, the support that they deserve. Thank you.
Rishi Chuprathy is our next speaker. Please play the video.
Hello. My name is Rishi Chuprathy, and I'm a rising junior at Kennedy High School. And not every student wants to become a doctor or a lawyer or a politician. In fact, some students want to create businesses where they sell their art, and some students want to work full-time as musicians. And some students want to major in theater, and they want to act and perform in shows and movies and plays. But these students, theater kids, as they're called, at Kennedy High School do not have the opportunity to hone their crafts and to pursue their passions in school. Why is this? Because John of Kennedy High School does not have a theater program. We don't have theater classes, and we don't have a theater teacher. How is this fair? These students, theater kids, and all the rest of us get to watch other schools, some just down the street, create beautiful performances two or three times a year, and we watch crowds full of people cheer on, but we don't get that same opportunity. Having a theater teacher is the bare minimum, so is having a theater program and performances at least one or two each year in school. So I want you to consider that, and I want you to think about how the fine arts impacts us students and how, more so, a lack of fine arts at Kennedy High School, specifically theater, has been impacting our students and how it could impact them positively when you think about the budget, when you think about where money should go or where resources should go. Think about that. Thank you for your time.
Sterling Hi is our next speaker. Please play the video.
Good afternoon, and thanks for letting me give the Year-end Review of the Montgomery Virtual Academy. My son was in advanced math and reading. He achieved As in every subject. He and his classmates built enduring friendships. His teachers engaged with him and his class and guided them to achieve. His class had meetups, clubs, and other extracurricular events. For these students, the MVA was their school. It was their community, and it worked for them. My son and his class are not alone. Students across the MVA were able to leverage the full MCPS curriculum, and they thrived. MVA MCAP scores show that all levels of MVA students were on par for their comparable schools, in some cases, outperforming MCPS. Our MAP test data showed that students were on track to continue and improve that trend. Overall, the MVA achieved a graduation rate of 86%, which is on par with comparable in-person schools. The MVA elementary students met the state's attendance proficiency standards while MCPS did not. MVA is still in demand. Even after eliminating the first grade, they received 1,103 applications for this year. That's actually in line for the 1,120 they received for 2024. Students were safer at the MVA. IEP and ALO students cost less to attend MVA than they did in-person. MVA voyagers were learning, growing, achieving, and helping each other thrive. Until the rug was pulled out from under them right before summer, they were excited for the next year. Now, when we should be recharging and spending time with friends and family, we're using all of our free time to save this school or planning for the worst-case scenario of having no adequate alternative for these students. And for what? Each of these MVA students is allocated over $18,000 a year that can follow them wherever or however they receive instruction. That funding can follow them to the MVA this year. There is still time to give these students the virtual access they need and deserve. We are more than willing to put in the work to make this a reality. Will you work with us to save the MVA?
Our next speaker is Heidi Smith.
Hi, my name is Heidi Smith. I want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak, and also thank you, Dr. Taylor, for coming to speak with the parents and the staff and the students at the MVA. We did appreciate your willingness to engage with us, and today I'm asking the Board of Education to also engage with us. The MVA has its own story. We've heard many of our stories. All of these kids have reasons that they were in the MVA. All of them had documented needs, and you proved them to be there. And what I would like is to open the lines of communication so that we can look at our data story to show all of the wonderful things that you've had in the MVA. It's a platform that can grow. It's a platform that was doing incredibly well. It was meeting all the needs of the kids, allowing them to access their curriculum, their grade-level curriculum. It was meeting their physical needs. It was meeting their educational needs, and that was taken away. But what we need to do is look forward, as Dr. Taylor has so eloquently put it. We need to look forward and learn from this and figure out a way to work together so that we can serve our kids. And by knowing our kids, you know them. You want to know them. I believe that you do when you put those words. And so, look at the data. Let's go back to the budget. Let's look at options, whether it's supplemental funding or grants or something else that we can come up with together. But please open the lines of communication to figure this out because we're not going away when we're backed into a corner and we have no alternative for our children. And we need to work together to figure out a solution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tiffany Shaw Smith. Please play the video.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Shaw Smith. I'm here to discuss Montgomery Virtual Academy. I sit before you to address a matter of utmost importance to our MVA school community. As you all know, our MVA school has been shut down, but not our community. We stand stronger than ever and together. Closing the MVA puts our children on a path of possible academic failure. This program has been a cornerstone for my children's education, fostering creativity, critical thinking, and personal growth. Losing this invaluable program has devastated our community as a whole. When we were promised another year, and you all turned around and told us you were closing the MVA without giving us time to plan for our kids, it put us in survival mode, honestly. Just to list a few things that MVA has given our community of children. Academic excellence. The program has consistently produced students who excel academically, demonstrating higher achievement by being a student of MVA. Student engagement. It engages students in ways that traditional classroom settings just cannot. Fostering a love of learning. It gives students the time, attention, and space that they need to give them the best learning environment. Unique learning. It offers unique learning opportunities that are not available at in-person schools. We are so unique as a community, the approach that is taken to assist our kids during the day makes all the difference in the world. This program created a partnership between teachers and parents. My children are both on IEPs, and when they were in-person school, we were told that they didn't have enough support to support them. I have never been told that by any staff member at MVA. Students' well-being. Participating in MVA has shown to improve students' well-being, mental health, and satisfaction in their overall education. I encourage you to reconsider opening the MVA.
Our next speaker is Courtney Evans. Please play the video.
I'm here to offer a Year-end Review of Long-Term IIS and ask that you stand up MVA 2.0 this fall so that needs are met and long-term IIS becomes a phrase of the past. Vulnerable children whose grade level was not included in the MVA spent last year in IIS. They received only four hours of virtual instruction per week, often in odd hours and without a peer group. They missed the equivalent of 153 days of school. While MCPS received about $18,000 per IIS student, the kids were not given materials and IIS teachers were only paid about $28 per hour. Sincerely, where does the rest of the money intended to provide them with free access to a full curriculum and learning community go? them with free access to a full curriculum and learning community go? Why does MCPS think it's okay to profit off of chronically ill or medically vulnerable children? Last year, while these kids sat idle, MVA kids were thriving together, because it takes a village and a safe conducive environment to educate a child. IIS is not a village, and in-person schools are not the right environment for hundreds of students. But MVA is a safe, accessible village with a versatile environment. It's unthinkable that a temporary steward was allowed to burn it down without demands from this board for accurate information and questions about the funding mechanisms. Even his parents and staff desperately sounded alarms that the decision was problematic. But that is how our year and our children's path to success ended. It is impossible to offer each IIS kid a classroom and full curriculum unless it is done via a larger program such as MVA. It is impossible to give special education kids full meaningful integration with general education peers without a virtual program like MVA. It is impossible to address the emotional and educational toll of bullying without a safe environment like MVA. To play off a quote from Dr. Taylor's introductory speech, "It requires all of us to meet the needs of each of us." Blueprint legislation now requires MCPS to show that at least 75% of our per-people allocation follows the child to the school or program that educates them. Even if 75% of our PPA were to follow MVA students to MVA, that's enough to fund our direct costs. The money is already there, and you have the power to allocate it as needed. Please let it be used to educate our kids in the village they need to succeed this fall. Thank you.
Our final video is Karen Lynn. Please play the video. Audio.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Lynn, and I'm a resident of Rockville. I work for innovation teams at Fortune 100 companies and have been doing this work remotely for almost two decades. Today, I'm speaking as an MVA parent of a rising fourth grader and from the perspective of a foreign service family. My husband, who is currently on duty abroad, works for the U.S. Department of State and has served six posts across five countries. As a result, our child attended five different preschools across three countries before coming to MCPS. Despite it being much more typical for state department families to live in Northern Virginia for their DC assignments, I insisted we move to Montgomery County because I was born here. And having both grown up in top public schools, we knew MCPS was what we wanted for our child. And it was here at MCPS that, for the first time in her young life, our child was able to attend the same school for more than one consecutive year and build meaningful connections with her peers and staff. So, we were thrilled to learn from the State Department that they listed Montgomery Virtual Academy as an accredited distance-learning school for over 11,000 foreign service children like ours, specifically to allow for continuity of their public education while serving abroad. We applied as soon as we found out and made it off the waitlist in time for this past spring semester. Now, it's not only a shocking disappointment that the MVA has been ripped out from underneath us, but the saga is also quickly becoming a deal-breaker for us to stay with MCPS and even possibly remain in the county or the state. Let me be clear, we don't want to leave. We are staunch supporters of public schools, but now we're questioning if it will be a mistake to stay, especially when other surrounding counties and states have demonstrated long-term commitment to virtual public schooling. We demand better because we know it's possible. So please help us find a way to stay. Thank you.
This will conclude our public comments. The next business meeting of the Board of Education for public comment is Tuesday, August 20, 2024. Signups for public comment will open on Tuesday, August 13, 2024 at 6:00 PM. In addition to the online signups for public comment, we allow for in-person same-day signups when space allows. An allocated slot may be filled on a first-come, first-served basis on the day of the meeting. In order to sign up in person, please arrive 15 to 20 minutes before the start of the open session and sign the form. In-person signups will close 15 minutes before public comment begins or when all slots are filled. I will now turn to my colleagues to see if there are any comments or questions. Mrs. Evans?
Sure. Ms. Sevastri always does this, but we all can do this. I just wanted to first take a moment to thank everybody that came today to give public comments, particularly everyone that came to give our new superintendent a warm welcome. But I did want to acknowledge Connor and Brianna to say that we see you. I think it's so great that you all are so active in your education, and as a result of these insinuating circumstances, that you are going to be great leaders and great advocates for your education. And what I would just say to you all is that we will make certain that as we move forward, that we will work with you all, and that we'll keep you in contact and abreast of what's going to happen in your education. But I just want to acknowledge you for coming and being so brave during the summer break to share your thoughts with us. It's very important. And so I heard you the last meeting, and we always hear you both. So I'll just say that. And then I would ask Dr. Taylor, we heard a comment from Ms. Hussein. And after the Anti-Racist Hate and Bias Committee has had an opportunity to meet and give their feedback, if we can hear a report back from that committee, so that we can have our community be rest assured that we are working to address the issues that are impacting a variety of our students and staff members. And then I just wanted to speak to the two students that were virtual from John F. Kennedy High School in relation to theater. Can we talk about what's going on or what's not happening at John F. Kennedy, and what we can do to remedy that? Because the arts are very important. We want to ensure that our students have access.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. At this time, I'll actually invite Dr. Moran to come up. I think he has an update that will be welcome to the board.
Thank you.
I'm trying to... Good morning or good afternoon? Good afternoon, I think. Yeah. All right. It's great to see you guys. So there are times where a challenge in one place presents an opportunity in another place. And what I mean by that is, so with Northwood moving, and Greg Mulnholz, the director, has been working, and this was also feedback that we received from Ms. Harris, from Ms. Howe, who testified earlier. We are going to combine the Northwood Theater Program, which is well-established and a very strong program. It's going to be housed at Kennedy during this next three years. So we are going to have them working together, collaborating, providing an opportunity to build a program with a model program that's being housed at Kennedy, so that they'll be able to, you know, see what a program like Northwood's looks like and build it over time. So it's going to be a great collaborative experience for two communities to come together and develop something that has not been there at Kennedy, I think, for many, many, many years. So I'm excited about that opportunity. Right now, we also are in the process of looking at creating a class as well at Kennedy. So again, having a mentor teacher that will be on-site every day for these performances, and Northwood's teachers exceptional, will help build that program and then, you know, sustain it over time.
Thank you. That's great. And I hope we can find a way to get that message out to our students as well, that way they can know what's coming.
We will absolutely do that. And they're going to do some joint performances as well, which is another wonderful community builder for those two really, really great communities.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
That quick update. Yeah, thank you.
I think I saw Ms. Rivera Evans light on.
Yes, thank you. Before you go, although it's not a question, it's actually a comment. But I just want to say, I'm always impressed by our young people who testify and advocate, and Richie and her other student colleague from Kennedy. But I guess what troubles me as a board member, and also as a former theater mom, because guess what? Theater is just more than an experience. Theater really helps with character building. It helps with teamwork, with collaboration, with respect for others. It just creates a sense of pride, right? So even though that's great news, I guess my question is, if Northwood was not closing, right, what would happen? So I want us, as a board member, to look at the other schools that might not have a theater program, right? And to look at it also with an equity lens. Because we should be having experiences for our kids that are across the board, and it should not be by zip code, by region, right? It should really be... Because I have to tell you, even though none of my kids, which I thought one of them was actually going to go into being an actor, because honestly, we all thought he was, but he didn't, it really, it really makes a difference. And some of the best memories that my kids have, and some of the best memories I have from high school, were when I was in that theater program. And so I just want that experience to be accessible to all our students. So if we can kind of look at that in other, in other schools and see how we can, we can remedy. And there's also a lot of partnerships that we can do, you know, where there's a lot of local theater companies that I'm sure will be happy to collaborate with MCPS. So thank you, Dr. Moran. That's what I had to say. And just piggyback on, remember Evans' comments to Connor and Brianna. Both of you brought me to tears, but Brianna, I really think your testimony was very compelling. And as somebody who has somebody very close to me in the MVA community, right, because you guys are a community, you became a community. So I truly appreciate the devotion that you guys have come. You're here during your summer vacation, as one of the parents said there. But I just want to say to both of you that you have a lot to be proud of. And I think your parents should be also beaming of pride to have, to be able to come and to speak, right? It's always a challenge, even for adults. So to have young people do that, and I really, especially for Brianna, is she still here? I don't know if I see her. Oh, hi. I just want to say that I truly, I truly felt your pain and your fear. And I know that our very new superintendent also took note of that. And no, we do see you. You're not a number to us. You're not a, you know, a budget item, but all of you are part of, you're part of our village as well. And I want you to, all of you to know that. And to Ms. Hussein and Ms. Rama, thank you for bringing that to attention. We also have a lot of young people, a lot of new students to MCPS from Afghanistan, that I know that there's folks in our system working with, right? And so this is an important issue, I think, because we are by far the most diverse school system in the country. And I think that is one of the uniqueness that makes Montgomery County a special place to living and to thrive. And so, again, you know, you guys are part of the village, and we want every child to feel welcome, respected, and seen in our, in our system. So thank you for your testimonies to all of you.
I would just like to second what Ms. Evans and Ms. Rivera Owen had said about the theater program. Speaking as a student who has been involved in theater from element, from middle school through high school, I can honestly say that it's, you know, one of the most influential experiences for me. So to think of a school not being able to have those opportunities just because, you know, that's where they were zoned to go, doesn't sit right with me. So I'm glad to hear that we're making that whole, especially making Northwood whole with their theater program there, too. So, but again, just wanted to make sure that, how do we address this problem for the future in terms of schools who still don't have theater programs, maybe at the middle school or the high school level as well, and collaborating with, with the administration to just make sure that there's work done there across all programs.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, thank you. I want to associate myself with the comments of my colleagues and thank Dr. Moran for the update on, on Northwood becoming a theater troop-in-residence at Kennedy. That idea came about in a meeting with staff when we were talking about the fact that Northwood wouldn't have access to a theater, an auditorium on-site for at least the first year, perhaps even including the second year of their tenure in Woodward. And I think everybody here who's ever been part of a performance at a school, theater, orchestra, choral, they know that it takes so much more than just what happens during a school day to make that happen. And it takes the community support. It takes people from, you know, coming in to help the students build sets and design the lights and the sound and, and the costumes and the makeup. And it really is the strong theater programs in Montgomery County that give everybody so much joy. Einstein, I don't know if anybody else was at their performance of Beauty and the Beast this spring, but it was the best live theater performance I have ever seen, ever, anywhere. That production was astonishing. And that was, that was just high school, that was high school students. But, but the support of the community also comes to bear to create something like that. At McGruder, at RM, at Seneca Valley, at these schools with vibrant theater programs, you can't just say, okay, now you have a theater teacher, you have a theater program. It really does take community to build something like that. And those are the kind of opportunities that when we say equity in MCPS, and yet we have thousands of students who don't have the ability to participate in an activity like that, that's not equitable. And so I'm very happy to see that we're, and again, it is a circumstance that's allowing Northwood to become that theater troop-in-residence at Kennedy and help build and support the development of a theater program there. But there are other schools that also lack true fine arts equity. And we have, I think we're going to be hearing a lot from students in the coming months about fine arts equity. And when it comes down to Paint Branch High School, who lost their full-time instrumental music teacher this year, because the position was reduced from a full-time one to a .6, and that's a hard position to fill if you're an instrumental music teacher. And, you know, every high school should have a full-time instrumental music teacher. And so that's work for us as a system to ensure that it doesn't matter what school a student goes to, that they are able to participate vibrantly in the arts. And so I'm glad things are coming together at, you know, to support the development of something good at Kennedy. And I do know that Dr. Rumpf, who leads the, our Office of Curriculum Instructional Programs in the Fine Arts Department, they are doing, over the summer, a true fine arts review of all schools to identify what courses are offered at which school, what faculty is present at each school, so that we have a very clear and direct picture. We, as a board, can see where the gaps are. And then we can be very, very intentional when we're making sure that students have access to those kinds of programs. So I appreciate what the students are bringing to the table, appreciate the creative solutions, and looking forward to Dr. Rumpf's equity in, in the arts report that we'll be getting later on this summer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to everyone that came to testify today. I appreciate your heartfelt testimony. To our MVA parents, I urge you to work with our school-based staff. School starts in less than, in about 40 days, and I urge you to work with the school-based staff to have this most smooth transition as possible for your children, so they can have the support to be successful. With that, I move on to our next agenda item. Agenda item number six, consent items. And I ask my colleagues to let me know if you have any items that you would like to pull. Ms. Harris?
Yes, item 6.5, please.
Oh, it was the same. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion to move the rest and block?
Slow move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous with those present. Okay, if we could get Mr. Adams to come forward to talk about 6.5.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Good to see you. Sad to see you.
Because?
I just wanted to express my appreciation for your work and my sadness at your departure. So pulling this item, so item 6.5, we've had, we've seen these multiple times over the past several years, change orders for our, our major capital projects that are necessitated because the, the cost of the project, in reality, exceeds what was envisioned at the time that the, the project was developed and bid. And a lot of that relates to the ongoing pandemic financial pressures, labor cost increases, supply chain disruptions, inflationary upticks. And so this one is, relates to Phase Two of the Woodward Project. And Woodward High School Capital Project is one that, because of fiscal pressures, we had to, we had to phase. And now this is Phase Two, and the, the change order is for $35 million. And so my, I'd like an understanding for the community about with the, and so when we say a change order, that means this is not new. This is, this is the money that's required. This is, this is the money that's required to achieve what we were already planning to do. And so what, after this $35 million contract is fulfilled, what will we see have occurred, have happened in the, the context of that overall Woodward construction capital project?
Sure, thank you, President Silvestre and Dr. Taylor, members of the board. So yes, this one is, has been a bit more complex than, than many that we've had in the past, but as, as many of you know, we've had multiple phases to this because some of the delays, because some of the, the challenges from pandemic and, and supply chain, the project was delayed. And then ultimately, what we've been doing is adding pieces of phase two along the way. So if you recall, one of the last board meetings, one few board meetings ago, we brought a change order to the board for approval. That consisted of elements that were part of phase two, but also were required for Northwood as they come in and transition. So that work was approved and, and moved forward. That was the, the tennis courts, that was, you know, some of our exterior site improvements. This change order really is for phase two. So what you're getting as part of this change order is the phase two work, which includes all the, the outdoor amenities, the athletic amenities, includes the auxiliary gym that we've talked about. And we've actually been able to include in this the shell of the auditorium. If you, if you recall during the spring amendments, we were challenged with funding the entire auditorium, but we were able to work with the contracting team to be, at least build the shell, which means the exterior envelope, the roof, you know, it'll have a slab in it, so it won't necessarily be usable for Northwood in the interim, but at least it'll allow us to start that process. And as we continue to, to seek that funding, as you continue to seek that funding this fall, you know, hopefully you'll be able to procure those dollars and, and keep that auditorium on its original track. But this is really good news for this project because we were able to, at least in this change order, construct the shell of that auditorium to keep basically the schedule on track from, from that scope of work. But, but this is the entirety of the school, this is the entirety of the project, except the interior fit out of the auditorium as part of this change.
So at the conclusion of phase two, and when, in, in time, chronology, when would this work under this contract extension be finished?
So this work will take us up through the opening of Woodward. So this is all that phase two work. So if you recall, we talked about work that's happening while Northwood will be there, this is that work. And some of it may come online earlier and allow Northwood the opportunity to, to use some of these amenities, that's the goal. But this is the phase two work that we've been talking about, describing, even as part of our preliminary plans a few years ago, just around the site configuration, some of those amenities that are part of that. So, so yes, it's, 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 it's a change order, but it's phase two work. And it's a change order because it's a change to the existing contract. We're increasing the contract that already exists, and so we're doing it via means of, of a change order versus creating a whole new contract at this point.
And so this contract would mean that when the doors open for Woodward High School as a standalone high school, so that would be the fall of '27?
Correct.
The entire site will be completed? And the shell of the auditorium will be there, perhaps finished work done, but at least the shell?
That's correct.
Okay. And so is there a, is there a sort of a list or a timeline of what, what aspects of the exterior amenities will be finished first, like what's the, what's the work order there?
Sure. So we're still navigating, you know, you know, some of the, just the, the finer details of, of that work, but basically how the contract, contractors have to work. If you recall, that site's, you know, sort of slopes down towards the back, so they'll work their way out. So we're really going to strive to get some of the, the athletic field amenities there for Northwood first. If we're able to bring on the, the, the surface of, of the stadium field for Northwood early, we want, we absolutely want to do that. Some of the baseball softball fields, you know, they require a little more, you know, growing season for the, the sod to take and those sorts of things. So we'll, we'll have to navigate that in terms of, of when that'll come online for the possibility of Northwood to use it. But yeah, we're really going to push this phase of the work to try to get it done as soon as possible for Northwood to take advantage of it while they're staying at this, at the school. But we'll, we'll communicate to the community, to Northwood, to Woodward community around what, what the timeline looks like, what are some of the details of, of when some of these amenities will come online. But yeah, we're, we're going to really push, push for the, the surface of the, the stadium field and that auxiliary gym to try to see if we can allow Northwood to use those spaces during their stay.
And so there, now there are monthly community meetings, correct?
Correct.
That are happening. So I, I noticed on the website, and are those virtual or are those in person?
They're all virtual and they're conducted by the construction manager for the project.
Okay. And so some of the questions that I've been hearing from the community relate to the determination of what kind of a surface will be on the, on the field. And I don't believe that decision has been made yet.
So, so what you are approving today does consist of an artificial turf surface, and the reason we're doing that is because of stormwater management purposes. So the, if you go from a artificial turf to a natural grass, you know, it changes the, the stormwater management aspects of this. So we want to make sure we have the most stringent stormwater management piece in place. So if you were to decide, as, as we talked about, the artificial turf is still up for discussion, the O L O report is scheduled to come out, I believe, next week. And I'm sure there will be multiple deliberations at council as well, at the board around, you know, what is the, the future of our stadium services. But we felt it was important to include that in this work now, because if it does stay artificial turf, we don't lose time, we don't lose anything from a schedule standpoint. If it transitions back to natural grass, same thing, right? We have a more stringent system in place that we can continue forward with. So we're making the recommendation to continue in this path, and if it does change to a natural grass surface at some point in the future, you'll have more than enough stormwater management amenities and, and systems there to support that.
Okay, because I, we did agree in November, I believe, there was a contract that came to the board for the replacement of three artificial turf fields. And at that point, I, we, I pulled the item and it stayed from the vote because I felt like the system, we as a system had not done our work to update our understanding about the relative benefits and challenges of, of artificial fields versus natural fields. And we had agreed at that time that we would do, we would take the time to do an intentional look at that question, you know, comprehensively from, you know, costs and environmental impacts and sustainability impacts and public health impacts. And so, and that was in November, I don't believe we've started that yet, but as you mentioned, the O L O is doing an update of an earlier report that looks at this issue from a county-wide perspective, and that's coming out next week. And then also our Student Climate Action Council and Climate Ambassador Team have completed their own report that I believe will be coming forward. And so, I mean, I'm hoping that we will take that into consideration and when it comes, so that before it comes time to actually create that field surface, we are making a very informed choice. Because I, I, I don't feel like I have the knowledge that I need today to, to do that. And the other thing that, that the issues that has been raised with us are concerns about, because of where the site, the, how the site's configured and its, and its proximity of some amenity features to, to residences, what we are doing to look at noise abatement features. And so this is three years' worth of work. Do we have a plan yet to look at noise abatement for some of these amenities? Or is that, you know, work to, to come?
Sure. So, so much of the noise abatement work that we've done so far has been through landscaping work. So we did meet with the H O A, we met with, you know, the, the individual that's, I, I think sent quite a few emails about abatement. That probably is primarily related to the tennis courts and at least a visual buffer from the stadium. What we've talked about from a noise abatement standpoint around the stadium is that part of the, the lighting system is a performance contract. So once you approve this, that, that contractor then can start designing the lighting system, locations, heights, that will dictate where speakers go. Ultimately, what we want to be able to do is then have an acoustician be able to tell us, do we need different surfaces? Do we need absorption surfaces in different locations to try to minimize any reverberation? Can we have directional improvements to the speakers so that we're minimizing sound to the neighborhoods? Those are all things that are going to come now that, if, if this contractor, this change order is approved, that those contractors can start doing their design work, and then we can start doing that acoustical work around the stadium and the, the sound system.
And so these kinds of issues that were discussed at these monthly meetings?
So I, I've been talking about this acoustical piece for well over a year now. You know, I don't think that this, what I'm saying to you has, has not changed from a year ago. So I think what's changed is the timing of when we're getting this contract to you. We were hopeful to have this contract to you six months ago. You know, but there's been a challenge of, of over, cost overruns, you know, obviously we had to navigate, you know, how do we, how do we continue the project forward and, and, you know, not lose more time? And that's why we came forward with that auditorium. So the only thing that's changed from that statement around acoustical improvements is the timing of this contract award. But the same thing has been said all along, from day one, around how we're going to navigate this and try to be good neighbors, because we are in close proximity to, you know, several HOAs surrounding this site.
And so I want to give a shout out to MCC P T A here, because some of their work in partnership with, with the, you know, construction teams this year resulted in the creation of the school construction impact teams, task force, what's the T?
Team.
Team, okay, sorry. So we've got two things happening here. So we've got the, the ongoing, you know, Woodward High School, which itself doesn't have a standalone community yet because the boundaries haven't been established and that sort of thing. But there is, there are communities in, in the area that are definitely impacted. But we've also got Northwood, which is going to be in residence and, and living through. And so are this, the school, and the school community impact team meetings, are they combined? So people concerned about the Woodward and the Northwood community are meeting together at these meetings since, I mean, Northwood is going to be living the impacts here?
Well, I think certainly we're, we're going to encourage Northwood to participate in the Woodward, but Northwood will have their own anyway for their own building, right? I mean, I think that's the complexity here, is we have multiple projects, multiple communities being impacted by each project. So the, the, the challenge, I think, what I would say from these, the, the SCI approach is that usually it's focused finitely on, on one school. In this case, around Woodward and Northwood, since they're also tied to major boundary changes, we're obviously going to try to open the door and have as many people participate. Northwood participating, obviously, in the Woodward work, the Woodward community, each will probably have their own opinion or own, you know, concerns around what's happening and the timing and the, and the scope. But, but certainly we want to open these up to as, as many families and communities as possible, because they are going to be very impactful projects to all of the D C C and, and the surrounding W J area as well.
But anybody can go, right?
Ms. Harris, just, I'm going to go with Ms. Yang, she has questions as well.
Correct.
Right. Good afternoon, good afternoon. I just have two clarification questions. Number one, the acoustic work will happen once you start designing the light fixture for the stadium. Is that correct? I want to confirm that.
Sequence is lights first, and then speakers, and then acoustical work, yes.
Okay, all right. And, and when do we, when do we see that happening?
So historically, once this contract is approved, it'll probably take about three to four months for the, the lighting contractor, the stadium lighting contractor to do their design. Then I would assume probably another month or two for, for the, the audio system and then the acoustician to weigh in around any changes or modifications in services. But just to be clear though, we're going to do acoustical work, that's for reverberation, that's to make sure we don't, you know, sort of exasperate any sound. But it is a stadium, right? You're, you're going to hear, you're going to be able to hear the, the, the games that occur, soccer, field hockey, football, you name it, right? It's going to, it's going to be, you're going to be able to hear it. We're just going to do work to make sure it doesn't, it doesn't reverberate and cause nuisance issues beyond just the noise itself.
Okay. And they will be top, there will be opportunities for the community engagement during those monthly meetings on this subject?
Absolutely.
Okay. Another question I have is about the shell, that auditorium shell. When we say shell, does it have air or heat when we build a shell?
So it, it won't have the, the interior construction such as electrical outlets. We will most likely have to do some minimal HVAC work to make sure it doesn't, we don't have any freeze issues or any of those sorts of things. But it won't have air conditioning to the level of occupancy.
Okay. Got you. Thank you so much.
Anything else? You can vote on it. So can we get a motion to move 6.5?
Slow move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Our next item is agenda item number seven, report on board members' duties and responsibilities. And I ask the board staff to please come to the table. Welcome, please introduce yourselves and we can get started.
Good afternoon, President Silvestre, Dr. Taylor, board members. I am Patricia Erstbrung, I am the coordinator of Legislative Affairs for the Board of Education.
Good afternoon, I am Shannon Pattyfoot, Director, Senior Board Analyst. So I'll be kicking us off today. As outlined in the resolution dated from June 11th, Patty and I have conducted a study of the B O E's duties and responsibilities. With that said, can we move to the next slide? So on the screen you see five major categories for board responsibilities and duties. The board's primary responsibilities are aligned to support the school system strategic plan. Board members' responsibilities include, but are not limited to, selecting and appointing the superintendent of schools, formulating and interpreting policies, adopting both operating and capital budgets, making decisions on educational, budgetary, facility, and financial matters, establishing curriculum guides and courses of study, making a continuous appraisal of the educational and administrative management of the school system, establishing a school boundaries, communicating with residents, staff, and students, acting in quasi judicial capacity, in particular deciding appeals, appointing personnel, and advancing a legislative agenda. Again, not inclusive of everything, but those are the major responsibilities of the board. Next slide.
So at the outset, I'd like to note that the data from the, this presentation is largely collected from last school year, so July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. The first focus area we have is meetings. Last school year, you had 20 business meetings that included the 18 meetings that were scheduled at the outset of the school year, plus two special meetings that were added due to the needs of the system. Generally speaking, there is one meeting per month in July and August due to the board's summer hiatus, one meeting a month in November, December, and January because of the winter holidays, and then either March or April, depending on where spring break falls. Those other months, there are two meetings per month. When there is only one meeting per month, it is an all-day meeting. Closed session starts at nine, open session usually starts around noon, and it is not uncommon for that meeting to run into eight, nine, beyond in the evening. When there are two meetings a month, one starts in the morning, one starts in the afternoon. The morning meeting, like today, closed session starts at nine, open session starts around noon, one o'clock. And then generally, it will run until at least five o'clock, as we saw for today's agenda for the afternoon meetings. Closed session starts at noon, open session usually starts around three, but then the meeting will typically run until eight o'clock or beyond. Now for closed sessions, last year you had 39. There's always a closed session connected with the business meeting, and then additional closed sessions are added as the needs of the system dictate. These are opportunities for the board to discuss items that are legally permitted to be discussed in closed session and that the board determines needs to be done outside of public view for confidentiality reasons or otherwise. Some topics that are discussed in these meetings include updates on legal matters, maybe pending litigation or anticipated litigation, personnel matters, updates on negotiation strategies and status, and as Shannon noted, adjudication of appeals. So looking a little more at appeals, last calendar year, now this is calendar, not school year, because that's how our office tracks them, this board heard 128 appeals, heard and decided 128 appeals, which come from students, families, and staff. and decided 128 appeals, which come from students, families, and staff members. So far this year, 76 appeals have been filed, so we are on track to likely exceed that 128 number. As a way of example, today, the board adjudicated 15 appeals during closed session. The record pages exceeded 900. That is a lot, but that was today's situation. It is hard to estimate how much time is devoted to preparing for appeals. The amount of time would depend on the length of the record, complexity of the case, but it's safe to say that many, many hours are spent preparing for closed sessions and the business meetings. These are two of the main avenues for the board to receive information from the administration that is necessary for the board to provide oversight for the school system, which is one of the board's charged duties. The board must prepare and review the meeting materials in order to meaningfully participate. And I think that the questions that this board asks and the follow-up requests that are made during these meetings is indicative of how seriously this board takes that duty. Another opportunity for the board to receive information about the school system is through committee meetings. There are five standing committees for, standing committees for the board, communications and stakeholder engagement, fiscal management, policy management, committee on special populations, strategic planning. So each committee generally meets four times a year, and this provides an opportunity for either a deeper dive into issues that the school system is facing, or it allows the committee to get a preview of items that will come to the full board. And then it would allow that committee to help kind of identify areas where the board might want focus for those presentations at the full board meetings. Each committee has a chair, and that chair has duties beyond the committee members, including agenda planning, making sure that the items that are coming to the committee contain the, the information that they're wanting to hear. The one other thing that we, is not on this slide, but is also happens, you know, annually are public hearings and work sessions. These occur on the budget and facilities and boundaries work. They're typically eight work sessions and seven hearings scheduled per year, and then that number can be adjusted depending on if we need more or less of any of them. This is an opportunity for the board and the public to get more details about the budget and facilities plans, and then for the board to hear from the public concerning those items. Next slide, please.
So at any given moment, board members are collectively and/or individually engaged with various stakeholders. On the slide, you'll see kind of the four main touchpoints that board members have either with staff or with families, including students outside of this boardroom. So one of those is through school visits where a board member or board members are observing classrooms, connecting with students, staff, and administration in school buildings. Another way is through telephone calls, email exchanges, and actual meetings with administration and staff members. That could be to inform administration and staff members of, of something that a board member may have heard in the community or may have observed themselves wanting feedback or an update, or that could be administration reaching out directly to a board member. Meetings with parents and students in person or virtually happen very frequently in addition to telephone calls and email exchanges. And then board members also conduct their own investigation into items that may have been either seen on a school visit or been briefed by someone in the community, as an example. Next slide.
So the next item is advocacy. This includes meetings and phone calls with county council members and Montgomery County delegation members. Ms. Silvestre, as the board president, has a standing monthly meeting with the Chair of the Education and Culture Committee. And for other meetings, for other members, excuse me, the frequency might depend on the time of year. It's possible that there are more communications during budget season or where the general assembly is in session. But these are still conversations that are happening throughout the remainder of the year just to build that relationship and make sure that when there are items that need to be discussed, there is an existing relationship between those entities. And it, it keeps our elected partners up to date on what is happening and what's going on within MCPS. In addition to the calls and the emails, the board members are frequently attending county council meetings and the county council's committees' meetings, and they will travel to Annapolis during the legislative session to advocate on bills that are important to the school system. In addition to the advocacy efforts directly related to board duties, many members also sit on boards of various Montgomery County community organizations or participate as members of those organizations. Well, this is not a required duty of the, a board duty. It is important to keep school system issues kind of front and center in the community and with our community partners, and the board values volunteering and helping the community at large. And this is an area that Shannon will touch a little more on, on the next slide.
So community presence is a big part of board members' work. Through public advocacy, as Patty just described, and community engagement, the board shares its concerns in actions with the public. All board members, we spoke with all board members to conduct this study, and they all engage in advocacy by either attending or attending and speaking at various community group meetings, recognizing that engaging with the community extends beyond board meetings. Additionally, many board members are also active members in the community and in other community organizations, and some serve as actual board members of some of those community organizations, which gives the community additional opportunities to be able to speak with board members and convey their concerns or other things that they're seeing in their individual schools. So while community involvement is not required, it does give members those additional opportunities to interact with board members. Board officers also have the additional duty of officially representing the board's stated position on inquiries from the media, elected officials, and community groups. One thing that I do want to touch on, on the slide is graduations. So all board members attend MCPS graduations and officially confer the degrees of our students, which is a very busy time of the year, towards the end of the year, as board members are trying to attend, not trying, as board members are attending each and every graduation to ensure that our students' degrees are conferred. Next slide.
This is our final slide. As Shannon said, as we were trying to collect all this information, we spoke to all of the board members and we tried to just get a sense of how much work you are actually doing. So in our conversations and based on the information we were given, it was, came to light that, that many of our board members are averaging at least 40 hours a week of work, board-related work, and, and some members are exceeding that number. There are many calls and emails and communications that are happening either in the early mornings or evenings and weekends, as well as community events that occur outside of business hours. A couple of the members I spoke to reported that they attend at least 100, if not more, community events during the course of the year. And it might be good that those are happening on weekends because most of the school-based duties are happening during the day. Board meetings, meetings with staff, a lot of those happen during typical business hours. So it became very clear to us through our conversations that this, membership on this Board of Education is a 24/7, 365 type, type of role. And I think one thing that really drives that point home is we, we downloaded all of the Outlook calendars for our board members from, again, last school year, removed any of the items that weren't invites or events, and on average, our board members had 455 calendar items on their calendars. And you can see the range was 352 to 560. And the caveat here is that this doesn't necessarily even capture everyone's time because this is their Outlook calendar, their school, associated with their school account, but there's private calendars and work calendars that are also capturing the very, very many events and meetings that, that these board members are attending, just because multiple schedules have to be consulted. So it's clear that the board's role is extensive and time-consuming and requires an incredible level of dedication from you all to do the work that you do and do it well. And we thank you for the dedication that you have shown throughout the years. This is just an overview of the information we gathered. We'll be producing a written report that will be provided to the board sometime in early to mid-August. When that report is complete, we will also make sure the report is available to our community and available on the website. So with that, our presentation is complete. We're happy to answer any questions you might have about the methods that we used, and we also invite you to share your thoughts and experiences related to your work as board members.
Thank you so much for the work and the presentation. Folks might be wondering why we're doing this at a board meeting, and I think that the answer is that we take our oversight role very seriously here at MCPS as board members, and we want to be thoughtful about our capacity to do our job effectively. And so this is one, one tool to help us look and help the community understand everything that we do as we think about increasing the capacity of the board to do its job effectively. So that, now I turn it over to Mrs. Evans. She has her light on.
This was great. Thank you so much. And in this short period of time, you turned a lot of information around and look forward to getting the written report. And the visualization was very good for our public and just, you know, we all know how much time we spend and the level of effort we give to the job, but just to see it written out and laid out and to hear it, it's a lot. And I just thought too, we, you mentioned that we had 15 appeals just today, over 900 pages, and I hope that gives some context to our community when we go over in closed session and we don't come out into the public on time. We're not back there fooling around. We're just trying to make sure that we attend to all the work that is on our schedule. So thank you for that. I do appreciate that. And then this is just, once again, a screenshot of the last year. And just wanted to thank you all for putting this work together and thank my colleagues for giving of their time to be able to sit down and go through it with, with our staff to share what that work looks like. And I do know that we probably don't write every single thing down, so I'm certain we didn't capture everything. And then I, I will say, after the pandemic, some things have slowed down a little bit, so it's probably looked different than what it looked like pre-COVID, but still, it's a lot and it, and it's, it doesn't seem like it's on track to slow down. But just appreciate you all giving this brief, quick presentation and overview of, of what you've done and, and what our work looks like on the board. That's all I wanted to state. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yang?
Yes, I also want to associate myself with Ms. Evans' comments. Thank you for putting this together. I know I'm busy, so it's good to see them in, see the work in numbers. And I, I think the part of us is we are also constantly thinking of how to improve our work, right? In what areas we will put more effort, in what areas that we can have more collaborations with the system and with our community stakeholders. And we, we, we do this work so that we understand how we allocate our time, how to increase our capacity for our future work. I do have one request because the visual is so great in this presentation. If you can also include the CIP and budget hearings that we do, because in a continued effort to improve this year, we actually added more budget, public hearings and, and work sessions. So truly appreciate your work. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wolf, did you have any comments? Oh, Ms. Rivera.
Just very quickly, we also, some of us who serve on a couple committees, right? There is work after the committees, before the committees, to review the material, to work on, on a lot of, a lot of the stuff. And guess what? You know, we're supposed to be a part-time board, but those of us who, who do this work, we know that, that is not realistic. And just to keep in mind that we represent the well-being of 160,000 students and over 25,000 employees. So you can just kind of, in your mind, do the math of how many emails we get, and we have an incredible staff. But guess what? We, all of us have, are, you know, responsible for our own emails and checking them. So when we have an issue that brings in hundreds of emails, right, it becomes really challenging for some of us who have a full-time job. So in reality, some of us have been juggling two full-time jobs during this period, but I just wanted to mention that just to show the dedication of the folks that run for this very honorable office and how, you know, we don't run for, certainly, we don't run it for the pay or, you know, or the glory, but we run, we run because we know how important it is to value the children in our community and because we care that they get the best education possible. So for us, is we're investing in our community and because as a former MCPS student, when I was a student, I knew there was a board that cared just as much so I was getting a good and valued education. And my kids, when they were in school, there was a board, right, that I advocated in front of so they can get the same thing, and now it's the same way. So I just want to say thank you to the staff because we are small, but we're mighty.
One more thing I was going to say. So I know the level of detail is going to be in the report. Can you all find a way to add the number of emails that come through the BOE email inbox, right? And maybe take one board member's inbox to give people an example? And the only reason why I say that is people make the assumption that when they email everybody individually but on one email, that if one person has read it, that maybe we all have seen it. And if it happens to be during a time when we're getting email campaigns to come through our email account, that sometimes emails are missed, right? And you can't, there's, there's not a way to tell if every single person read it, but if we give people an idea that on average, on a daily basis or a monthly basis, we get 5,000 emails, it just might give some context to people if we miss an email, don't see it. Just, could you just add that for me? Thank you.
Ms. Wolf?
Yes, I wanted to thank you for your work on this. This has been tremendous. One thing that you may have captured, but I'm not sure that I heard it, was the fact that the board itself sits on other boards, and it's the board members that represent them on those boards. I think you talked about our participation on boards, but I thought you meant boards that we privately associate with. But, you know, say we sit on the CUF board, we sit on the MAB board and things like that. I didn't know whether that was included. Also, I wasn't sure whether or not you included, I, I'm sure we all get these requests, but I constantly get requests for interviews for student newspapers, and since they come from our own students, we tend to grant an interview. Can you speak to that? I don't know if that was included.
Yeah, so we did talk about board membership on other boards, including MAB, but the details around kind of student interviews and other interviews that either individual board members are agreeing to or conducting, or board officers are conducting, will be included in the report.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that because I know that those kinds of things usually come directly to me, and so they're not on my board calendar. So I was hoping that we could talk about that, and I can, I can talk to you off-site about it. Also, we get requests for interviews. Somehow, the University of Maryland, those in the School of Education have found us, and they are constantly, every year, there must be one class that emails us and has everybody emailing you for an interview. So thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a particular shout out because our student members of the board always have two full-time jobs. And I, I have often found myself in awe of the way these students are in their, mostly in their senior year of high school. So they're doing many, many, many things as a student, no, no pressure. And I know in many of them sacrifice, they do sacrifice. They all, some of the many activities and things that they feel passionate about and that typically they would participate in, they, they, they have to give up to serve on the board. So I'm not sure people fully realize the depth of that commitment, and just wanted to make sure that, that we recognize that.
Thank you. So again, thank you both for doing this work. And a note about our staff. And a note about our staff, we are able to do this job with all our demands because we have talented staff. So thank you to our board staff for helping us with our work. And we have added staff to the board office, two analysts and our communications director. So we are ourselves building the capacity of the board to do our oversight work effectively. So thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for the resolution. And now we can move on to our next agenda item, which is item number eight, the 2024 Year in Review. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board. As we gather at the first meeting of the new fiscal year, I'm pleased to present a snapshot of our student performance and accomplishments of the past year. Today, we're here to highlight some of the accomplishments of our students in terms of their academics, their advanced coursework, their work-based learning, student service, learning hours, extracurricular activities, athletics, and more. I will stress that although there are many wonderful achievements listed in this report, and we're delighted to share them, there's also a lot of room for improvement. And as we are continually focused on our continuous improvement, this is a great jumping off place for, for us to, to begin our work for this upcoming school year. As we view the presentation today, we should take pride in what was achieved, but keeping in the back of our minds this continuous improvement. The achievements that we celebrate today are made possible by the culmination of lots of hands and many years of work, not just one year of work or service. And I'd like to thank our dedicated teachers and staff for the valuable contributions that they've made to our community and to our schools as we move forward. I would now like to invite Dr. Moran and Dr. Pugh to provide some more details about our accomplishments. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Just want to echo your sentiments, you know, the profound significance of the snapshot that we are going to share with you, but also reiterate that there is significant work that needs to, to be done as, while we look at these, these results. So first, I just want to start off and share a incredible number. So based off of our estimates, 12,314 students walked across, across the graduation stage this school year. Montgomery Blair had the largest graduating class with over 700 students walking across the stage earning their diplomas. And I want to take an opportunity to recognize all of our high school principals and the assistant principals who do a fantastic job of, you know, managing and implementing a extremely large operational challenge. Sitting on stage and watching those graduations is one of the most satisfying experiences, which I know that our, our board agrees with. But the way that it is carried off at each of our high schools is done exceptionally well. Out of those students, just want to highlight that, you know, tens of millions of dollars in scholarships were, were rewarded to our, to our students. Many are headed to four, two- and four-year institutions. And I want to, I want to just connect back to the student testimony about Kennedy. I think it's wonderful that we are also acknowledging that many of our students are going on to college, but many of our students are also going on to two-year universities, are going on to become electricians, to become plumbers, to enter the arts field. So a lot of just wonderful things happening for our students of significance. Over 50 of our seniors at, at this very moment have entered the military to serve our country. So again, just, you know, another path that our students take. And I want to thank all of our students, of course, who are entering, entering the military for their service. Now going to flip it over to Dr. Pugh to share a little bit more information.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Sylvesteri, Dr. Taylor, and members of the board. In the next slide, you'll see we are charged with making sure that we provide opportunities for students to be college, career, and community ready, and underpinning that is a strong academic program. You'll see some data up here about the number of courses and the number of students. So to, I'm not going to read each of those boxes to you, but the first two boxes on the left, when you add them together, that would be all of the students who took advanced placement courses and students who took an international baccalaureate course. 27,929 students enrolled in at least one course, and those students collectively enrolled in 55,967 courses. Of the students in those courses, 21% are Asian, 18% are Black or African-American, 21% are Hispanic and Latino, 33% are white, and 6% identify with two or more races. Not surprisingly, the AP US Government Course, which also counts as a, as a credit towards graduation, was the course with the highest enrollment with 6,000, over 6,000 students participating. AP English Language had the second highest with 4,517, and that's an excellent entry-level course to get ready for college-level writing. In addition, we had 2,591 students who participated in dual enrollment courses. And in the box on the right, just of note, is that 292 students earned over 50 college credits and 268 graduated from Montgomery College with an associate's degree when they were finished with us here in high school. The demographics of the students who, who participated in dual enrollment, 23% are Asian, 24% are Black or African-American, 21% are Hispanic or Latino, 25% are white, and 7% identify with two or more races. Together, the students represented here have earned 11,201 college credits. And according to the Education Data Initiative, which was just updated at the end of June, the average public four-year university charges in-state residents $406 per credit, which means collectively, our students' efforts this year saved our families over $4.5 million. Next slide, please.
So this is, so this is a slide about student service learning hours, which has been a major focus of our Board of Education, a major charge of our Board of Education. This number is, is phenomenal. So over, over 2 million student service learning hours were accumulated this year by our students. And this year, almost 3,000 middle school students earned the Superintendent's SSL Award, which is a more, a growth from the, the previous year. Just for context, that means that they completed 75 SSL hours or more at the, at the middle school level. Other service learning has been earned through courses and in-school because part of our schools thrive in when our students give back to the community. Taken together, our service learning is a web of mutuality. Our community and students both benefit from the virtues of giving back, leaving things a little better than we find them. And that was exemplified this school year across our schools.
Next slide. So you heard a little bit about our AP and IB and dual enrollment, getting ready to pursue higher education. Community readiness is also of value, and we'd like to take this, this opportunity to speak a little bit about our career and technical education opportunities. Our work-based learning has been in working progress. It is an initiative that provides opportunities for students from pre-employment all the way to registered apprenticeships where students are earning, earning wages. So as we think about career, we really do want to celebrate career readiness. It is a cornerstone. It's so important that students actually get industry experience in the workplace, both to make a decision about, is this something that I want to continue, but also to learn about the different areas that are in each of the careers. We are really blessed with our employer community. This year, we had a number of students who held internships with employers in the community. Almost half of those internships were taken as part of a, of a CTE program. Interestingly, hopefully, we're raising our own 153 students in the education and child development. I'll send those to April Key, and we can talk about hiring right away. We also had over 390 students in health professions and 170 in business, finance, and hospitality and tourism. We have very strong partnerships in each of those industry sectors that allows our students to have authentic experiences. In addition, the 418 students were registered for and participated in a two-year work-based learning CTE program of study called College Career and Research Development, or CCRD, you might have heard us speak of. The, that sequence is a two-year work-based learning program that allows students the opportunity to actually research different career opportunities, develop additional workplace skills, increase financial literacy, and complete and on-the-job experience with an employer. So the little number there is little about the apprenticeships, but when we started, we had none, and then we went to 11, and now we're at 26, and we anticipate that growing as we work, continue to work with the state on implementing apprenticeships in alignment with the blueprint. We did have a variety of, of industry-based apprenticeships, which are much more intensive in terms of the hours of work that are required in order to earn a true apprenticeship. And we have to be thankful for our automotive technology sector. We had dental assistants, we had leasing agents, we had people working in our own print department, educational policy analysis, multimedia and video production, facilities maintenance, et cetera. So we want to continue to grow this opportunity, and we do anticipate a significant expansion next year. And then finally, this year, we have also had 863 high school students who represent every single high school who participated in career exploration as part of the summer rise. That work, this entire work and all of the data on it would not be possible without our businesses, governmental agencies, higher education institutions, and nonprofit organizations who partner with us to provide students with the opportunity to engage in real hands-on learning opportunities related to their fields of interests. The programs all help to inform student decision-making about life after high school. Next slide, please. This next slide is a little bit of a deeper dive into the career and technical education programs of study. We're proud that this year, we offered 51 programs of study across 11 CTE clusters. It's important to note that when students leave, just like earning an, an AP or an IB recognition for passing a test and earning a credit, these students are earning technical skills, they're earning technical skills attainments and what is called industry-recognized credentials, which allow them to walk right into a career at a particular level and be able to be of value to the employer. And so it, it is something that they can continue to learn and do advanced classes alongside of this. So there's real value in being able to earn those credentials here at the high school level. So this year, we had 17,926 students who enrolled in these programs, and 2,223 of them actually earned the industry certificates, which generally come after multiple courses. This year, we also had 5,227 students who were on track to be CTE completers, meaning they've done all of the courses required in a pathway to be specific completers. Hopefully, next year, we will have more full and complete numbers, usually in the fall is when we get that data back. And next slide.
All right, I have the opportunity to talk about athletics. And as you know, the, the student experience extends far beyond the classroom. Athletics presents a wonderful opportunity to our students, both physically and socially. We have over 23,000 students at the high school level that participate in athletics and 4,500 students that participate at the middle school. They participate in over 44 team sports at the high school level and seven-team sports at the middle school level. And as you can see, we won 17 state titles this year. So proud of that number, looking to it, for it to go up a little bit. I know Dr. Sullivan and our athletic directors would love to see that number increase. Over 400 of, I'm sorry, over, yeah, over 400 of MCPS students will be participating in college athletics with over 200 receiving scholarships this fall in college. Next slide, please. So this is a slide I'm very proud to present on, and I want to start with one that has been a focus of our high schools, and we've, we've made a significant amount of progress. And that is with the Maryland Seal of Bili literacy. 2,083 students received the Maryland Seal of Bili literacy last year. For, for just context, the Seal of Bili literacy is an award given by participating school systems that recognizes students' high level of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in English and at least one or more languages. And in some cases, at graduation, as you heard, there are students that received it in three languages. And many of our graduates, specifically, I'll, I'll highlight Northwood High School, students received it for the first time in, in a, in a language, which was in the state, which was very exciting. 912 students have been awarded the Governor's Merit Award for Scholastic Achievement. 207 students were named the Ruth and Normal, Normal Rails Scholars. 22 students have received the prestigious National Merit Scholarship based from the College Board, and 542 students have received the College Board National Recognition Programs Award Academic Honors. And of course, a lot of this is an important part of, of what we mean when we talk about a return on investment and our students going off and us, you know, being able to see the great things they're doing after they leave Montgomery County Public Schools. Again, just want to take the opportunity also to, as we heard in the previous presentation, thank our board who advocates for a lot of the opportunities that our students receive and acknowledge our excitement for, for Dr. Taylor and the, the great opportunity that we have to share, you know, even improved numbers next year at this time. So with that, just congratulations to our graduates, and I'll turn it back over to the board for discussion.
Thank you. Dr. Moran, could you please repeat, or Dr. Pugh, the number, total number of graduates this year was 12,000?
It was 12,312, I believe. That's, I was two off. I apologize.
And that includes summer graduates?
That is including summer graduates, yes, which, and we have our summer graduation coming up here very soon, which will, will all be there to celebrate that.
Thank you. I, I track the graduation numbers every year, and it seems like an increase. I always remember the 11,000 number typically, so.
I believe it was an increase of over 700 students from, from last year, if I recall correctly.
Okay. And that's, I mean, this is a fabulous presentation. It's always so wonderful to have it at the end of the year so we can see what our students accomplish because of all your hard work and their hard work. For me, I would appreciate knowing, just kind of along the lines, did it go up? Did it go down? Because it's just a number, and I'm sure they're great, but I don't have context to say, okay, the number of AP, we're going up, we're going down. Just as board members in our oversight role, it would be helpful to have that information. So as a follow-up, if you could just put an arrow up or arrow down for these metrics, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Could we pull up slide four again, please? Can they get slide four?
Student Service Learning Hours.
Thank you. Slide four. There we go. And I just wanted to point out to Dr. Taylor. So this picture is from Earth Day, and this was the inauguration of the partnership between MCPS and the Charles Koiner Foundation Urban Farm. And this is the Reach Hub Urban Farm and Sustainability Demonstration Site at Loiderman Middle School, which is going to be, it was a big part of the, the sustainability work that we're doing as a system. The first one, this is the first, we're hoping to, to grow these, but this is, the entire site around here is going to be a very large organic farm. That is a resource for all the communities in the area, and this is Loiderman Middle School, but immediately adjacent to it is Weller Road Elementary School. And just a few blocks away is both Comusettis and High School and Wheaton High School. So it is a, it is a resource for all of those students at all, in the multiple programs that are there. So I just wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to point that out because you weren't here then. So, and then I did want to just thank you in general for everything you, you raised. But just ask, as Ms. Sylvester was saying, you know, the next time we do this, could we contextualize this a little bit? But I'm going to ask also if, if next time we do this, we can shout out our fine arts. Because we always talk about athletics, and we have a student athletic council. Why don't we have a student fine arts council? We have students in this county who believe deeply in fine arts equity, whether it's instrumental music or theater, and they want to be part of creating a vibrant countywide network where every student has all the support and all the opportunity they need or want to, to participate robustly in the arts. And, you know, we have, we have county honors band, orchestra, and jazz at the high school and middle school level. We have county honors chorus. We are doing adjudications in our fine arts and our, in our bands, our orchestra, our chorus, our jazz bands. We have our students traveling all over the country, participating in, in competitions and, and groups that are sort of organically homegrown, like the Acatonics Acapella Group at Wheaton, won huge awards. won huge awards at multiple national competitions this year. So if we could give the fine arts students a shout out and a little bit of love next year, because it, what they do is real. And I just challenge you, I go to as many school performances at every elementary, middle, and high as I possibly can squeeze in every year, and they are all amazing. You close your eyes, you think you're at Carnegie Hall, and this is middle school. And so we do amazing work in the arts, and all love to all of our arts teachers in MCPS. So if we could just give them a little more of a spotlight. And then I did, I want to thank you for highlighting the work of our students in achieving the Seal of Bili literacy. But just turning back the clock a little bit, I also want to give a shout out to the fact that it was advocacy of Montgomery County high school students, particularly students at Northwood High School, who worked with Delegate, then Delegate Enesole Gutierrez in the 2016 General Assembly to finally get the Seal of Bili literacy bill across the threshold, because there had been ridiculous objections to that bill for multiple years, until we embraced and brought the students forward in force to support her in that work and got that bill across the finish line. And then Montgomery County Public School students have benefited from that bill tremendously since then, because when these students achieve the Seal of Bili literacy, it travels with them forever because it's permanently on their diploma and is permanently on their transcript. And so, and, you know, we all know, if you are bilingual, multilingual, you are now, you have such an advantage in the global world and in any, any career field that you want to pursue. So thank you for highlighting that, but I did just want to give a shout out to Montgomery County Public School students that got that bill across the threshold.
Thank you. Any other board members? Ms. Rivera-Owen?
Just very quickly, I know those of us who, all of us who were at graduation, it was an amazing experience seeing our young people, because it was a first class, right? That graduated, well, they went virtual for high school. So there was, their transition from middle school to high school was not as smooth as everybody predicted. And so it was very exciting that they got to, to the finish line, per se. But I do also want to echo, and last year, we brought decision, I think it was me and Mrs. Wilson, maybe Mrs. Y, how we wanted more of the breakdown in the data that we have. So we wanted like more desegregated data. For example, I graduated, you know, from Montgomery College with a degree, like, it's 268, like, it would be great to know what schools they graduated, you know, what high schools were fed into that, the demographics, the geographics, right? The same thing for the 292, because I know, for example, Northwood High School has a huge component of the dual enrollment options, right? So, so just for us to see where else that might not be as present. And then I want us to go to Slide 5, because this is a slide that's very close to my kind of advocacy that I have been doing for years. And, and again, I would like to know the internships, what grades are we talking about out of the 1,700? Again, what schools are fitting into that number? Again, the demographics, again, the geographics, all that. The same thing for the other slides. And I do have a very serious concern with some of these numbers, because these numbers, right? Like, the summer rise, they're juniors and seniors, and that's, that's a good number that's been going up since the program started. But with the other numbers, I am concerned, especially the site-based work experience and apprenticeship program experience, because this is, to me, for 160,000 students, it's absolutely minute, right? So I really, with the blueprint, what they're asking us to do in the future, right? And the fact that we had gotten rid of the automotive program in Damascus, right? When we are, right, that just, those things just did not make sense to me as a community member, but as a board member specifically, because these are kind of like the programs that not only the parents are, but the students themselves are asking. So I just feel that there's a lot of, a lot of barriers for some of the students to have a fair access to some of these programs when they are really asking for it. And with apprenticeships programs, we live in a community that we are blessed to have renowned industries that, you know, around, that, you know, like the Marius of the World and others, the Lucky Mart's, that we have so much in this county, right? And I just feel that we are not very well-connected to that, and we're not really taking advantage of those connections. And I just feel we have a great pool of kids that could take more advantage of that. So I know we're working on it, but can we work harder? Because 26 kids is just not, for me, at least, is not, is not really cutting it. And again, I would like the data to show, you know, in the different regions of the county, like East County, you know, do the kids in the East County have, you know, a fair access to these, to these programs? Do the kids in the Up County, right? Because I can tell you, Up County and East County are usually forgotten for a lot of access issues, and a lot of the growth of housing is happening in the Up County and it's happening in the East County. And I just want us to be strategic about just the fact that there are, there's a lot of young people that want to take advantage of these programs, and that instead of us taking some away, because it might just, you know, be easier for us and put it somewhere else, that we really think about the impact and the growth in certain areas. So I know that we are, I don't know where the whole thing right now with Damascus is, because I hear sometimes from, from different folks in our staff, different things. I would like to have a clear idea of actually what's happening with that, because I can tell you, the community is eager to hear one way or the other, right? But again, I just, I just want to say that it was amazing to go to all these graduations. And with the CTE programs, again, I would like to have more desegregated data so we know if there's an overrepresentation in an area, in an area that is not getting some of those services and why. But I do have to tell you that the class of this year really, it was a proud moment for a lot of them, because they, that transition was definitely enough investment. But thank you so much.
Dr. Pugh, you have your light on?
I do. I just want to thank you very much for bringing up the information that you brought up as well about access to all of our CTE programs. So there is a website that shows the overlay of where every single program and where every single completer is that would allow you to look and see by district, by school, where students have access to programs. The other piece is, you're not wrong. These are very small numbers for a county of this size, and we have a blueprint that says we need to get to 45% of our students in apprenticeships, which is at the highest level of being paid and being recognized and being approved by DLLR. So that doesn't come easily, and especially traditionally, it has been about having the experiences. That has been a value in a culture here of taking multiple courses in multiple pathways to try a variety of things. So it is going to take a culture shift to say, I'm going to commit to doing these four courses and taking the industry-recognized certification exam at the end. And we are going to have to be strategic. We're going to have to go through processes to close small programs, open more programs where the need is, and we're going to have to build the partnerships. Two things really quickly, because I could talk CTE forever. The, we have been working for the past two years with JP Morgan through the Talent Ready Program, and that is regionally through the Washington, Virginia metro area, in building exactly what you're saying, the structures to be able to connect industry to schools. Because quite frankly, we're not good at it as a school system and as schools in speaking the language of businesses. And businesses are not on the same page either always with exactly what they need in their industry. So Talent Ready work has been helping us do some of those partnerships. That's how we, how we came with Montgomery Code and how we came with some of the other programs. The other piece is Montgomery County is participating with the state in a project, a national project called Project Launch, where we are learning from some of the leaders in CTE and how to do work-based learning well, and putting together what the state plan is, because there isn't a state plan necessarily to do this work. So I hear you, we need to improve, we need to get better, and you need the data.
And the last data that I'm going to ask for is for summer school for last year. I didn't, I didn't see the attendance of summer school students in the year review. Like, how many kids went to summer school last year?
We, you know, we can get, we can get you that data point, and definitely appreciate the feedback of being able to see the trend over time in comparison to previous years. So thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, and I'm making a note here for our agenda setting for the year, because we have student data pathway milestones at every board meeting, and we have covered a lot of these data points throughout the year. But maybe come this time next year, we link those presentations to this presentation so that when you're getting the year in review, you're reminded of all the presentations you've had throughout the year that gives you the information that you're asking for right now, rather than you having to go dig for it in board docs. Ms. Yang?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pugh, for sharing the Talent Ready Program and the Project Launch Program. So we are all realizing the importance of work-based learning and CTE learning and the close connection we have, we should have with our industries and businesses. And just the other day, Mrs. Evans and I were at the Chamber of Commerce event. We want the school system to be present, the board to be present, so they know all the opportunity and our willingness to do partnership. And I am excited about our pilot program for next year in four high schools to increase internship opportunities for our students. I do also want to congratulate our systems for our AP and IB efforts. So we have been getting, receiving reports throughout the year that we have increased our AP and IB enrollment and the test-taking takers, right? And so, and you were sharing the demographic, and I see the significant increase of some of our underrepresented groups. So I want to congratulate our students, families, and the staff for their effort in this area. Next year, I'm looking forward to the graduation. I was at Blair shaking 700, more than 700 hands was quite an experience, and I also look forward to seeing the increased numbers we have in our celebrations. Thank you.
I see Ms. Wolf has her hand up. Ms. Wolf?
Had to get off mute because I'm in my car, sorry. I see that my questions have already been raised. I think sitting next to Ms. Rivera-Owen, she's now channeling me about the demographics of East County, and I appreciate that. But what I did want to put a plug in for, and this may be something you're already working on, and I'm not aware of it, is you know that Montgomery College opened, opened a branch over here in East County? And I think this is a good opportunity to encourage more of the students from the schools over here to participate in the dual enrollment program. And I don't know whether or not you have an agreement with, with the East County section to see if you can work on increasing numbers. I am pleased, I usually attend the graduation, I didn't this year, but I do notice that you have greatly increased the participation of all groups in the county. But I think this is a way to bring, bring more opportunity to this area.
Dr. Pugh?
Thank you for that. I appreciate that, Ms. Wolf. And we are aware of the Montgomery College branch in East County, and it is, because it's part of Montgomery College, our agreements with Montgomery College also extend to that location, and we're excited about being able to bring more and similar dual enrollment opportunities to students there.
I know someone.
Yes. But I'm talking about actively recruiting students to, to participate, because I'm not, I'm not so sure that as many of our students over here are aware of the opportunity, particularly the idea that they're coming out with college credits and credits that their parents don't have to pay for.
Ms. Evans?
Are you there?
Yes, yes. She, she's nodding her head.
Yes.
Well, I can't see your head because.
I'm saying yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will do the recruiting. We have several vehicles to be able to do that, to make sure that students know that they have the opportunity. But again, I think the significance of the value of the credit, we just don't, you know, that's not said enough. I mean, our students save their parents for over $4.5 million this year alone with the number of college courses they took that Montgomery County Public Schools paid for. So I hear what you're saying, and we will make sure we have great efforts, and I'm sure Genevieve Floyd is listening and will be ready to respond. So thank you for that.
Anything else, Ms. Wolf? Seeing none, Mrs. Evans?
Mr. Suvarna was there?
No, I appreciate that, thank you. So I just had a couple of things to ask. First of all, I just wanted to make a comment about summer rise. I was a former summer rise student stationed right here in Central Office, so I think I can attest to just how much it impacted me in my experiences there. I had a question about the apprenticeships. And then of the apprenticeships listed here, the 26, how many of those, do we know how many of those were in MCPS versus how many of those were in employees outside of MCPS?
We do know that. I just don't know it off the top of my head. I'll have to get that for you specifically. But the goal is to actually make sure that it's in their, in their industry. So some of what you were doing might also have been internship hours, depending on your pathway.
I was a summer rise student, not an apprenticeship.
So summer rise is a really unique opportunity for us. It's actually one of the areas where it's a, it's a smaller summer experience, that if we expanded a little bit, could possibly be worth half a credit or a credit towards part of your program. So I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah. And then just continuing there, I'd like to associate myself with the comments of my colleagues, Ms. Rivera-Owen, and about the desegregation of data, just to look at where some of these, had the breakdown of schools in relation to work-based learning, CTE, AP and IB scores, and then I, sorry, not scores, test takers as well. And then also looking at how work-based learning opportunities, the change after we had made it an honors credit versus having it be an on-level credit would be something I'd be interested in, in the future, as we get those data for later on in the year.
Mrs. Evans?
Sure, I'll be quick. But so on Slide 5, the work-based learning, what triggered me was the comments of Ms. Rivera-Owen. Councilmember Loriann Sales has hosted some community conversations across the county, and I've seen some of our staff there. So I went to the East County as well as Up County in Germantown, and then last night it was in Mid County. She's going to hold two more. But she, I heard from several students there in relation to like our internships and various other opportunities around being able to get some hands-on experience and being able to explore their careers, that they're just not aware of all the opportunities that we have. And one student said in particular, she was like, "I'm probably not going to see it on my email, I'm probably not going to go to the website. Is there a way for us to have the conversation in school, right? To be able to hear and know?" I was going to ask, so you know what, I love the graphic and design office, and I don't want to give them one more thing to do, but do we have any, like, brochures, particularly when we're out in the community? Because I did have a lot of community members ask me, was there something that tangible that they could touch to see all the various opportunities? There was another gentleman, his first name was Jermaine, I can't remember his last name, but he was with the Street Outreach Network. And so his question and/or concern was, you know, youth engagement, getting them, doing something productive really means having them to know what the opportunities were. And so they were just very unaware, thinking that there was criteria to summer rise. I told them there's not. But just having people know that it's out there, and then I don't want us to always depend on our counselors to get the information out, because I don't, I just don't know how many people are actually making that touch point with their counselor. But I know that emails are going out, but everybody is not reading their emails. If there, if there's a brochure or a booklet... there, if there's a brochure or a booklet, if I can get some, if every board member can get some, so that when we're out in the community, we can hand them out, give them out. But the same way, we're kind of going out into, like at one point in time, what we were doing was we were having pop-ups, right? When we needed families to really be engaged in whatever information we wanted them to have, we were being intentional about where we were going, where we knew they were at. And I think it's so important, particularly as we're partnering with WorkSource Montgomery around the career counselors and having our students just really be aware of what their strengths and interests are, that this is just another way for our students to get the information beforehand and prior to high school, to start thinking about it in middle school. So, now, so I'm just thinking about our faith-based organizations. Some years back, some of our faith-based leaders were asking, "Do you have brochures that we can have?" Because we can insert them in our newsletter at church. But there's just a variety of ways that we can reach people in our communities so that everybody is aware of what's happening in our school system. And so, in that instance where a student doesn't know, or a parent doesn't know, a trusted community leader that they look to for information can be able to share that. So, I'm just, if we could just think about what we can have that we can put into families' hands, particularly as we're about to come up on the Back to School Fair, where we want everybody to know. And even our community partners, some people at the mixer that Ms. Yang and I attended, they weren't even aware about Summer Rise, right? I told them, I said, "We have more students than we have businesses that are able to place our students." So, just any opportunity that we can get or have to share our information. And I know we're always working on trying to do this, but I can help you, my colleagues can help you, but just any way that we can think about how we can put it in people's hands would be more helpful. Because as much as I get the text messages from the school system, I see the newsletters, and I go on the website, everybody's just not doing that. They're not. So, how can we think about all of our consumers, right?
I love that you're saying that, because we actually, I mean, in two years, we've gone from the file folder in the guidance counselor's office with the business who would be interested in supporting, some schools had lots of file, file folders, and some schools didn't have many. We went to an online system where all of the jobs were available, all of the internship and apprenticeships opportunities were available. That was part of the Talent Ready work, is creating a system. Now, that system today has access for both employers and for students and families to be able to look and see what, what is there, married with the, the career interests surveys. To your point, a one-pager with the continuum of work-based learning has been developed with all of the requirements for each one and a QR code that takes you to the website that shows you what's available where. So, I will make sure your mailboxes have a copy of that.
That'd be great. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Suvarna?
Yeah, just a quick question. Out of curiosity, what, what would that website be that you, that you just mentioned, where all the work-based opportunities?
Honestly, if you just go to the MCPS website and type in "work-based learning," that should be your first link.
And it'll link me directly there. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll make sure you get several.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation. And I, but I do want to sort of look at the flip side of, we look at our numbers, we look at how many students are participating in these programs. And we're talking about the state requirements and the increasing requirements for us to have, you know, 45% of our students participating in, in apprenticeships and things like that. But we're not, the pragmatic work, and I'm going to challenge, I think, this board to be part of the advocacy at the state level around this, is we're, there are barriers that prevent students from being interested in taking part, taking advantage of a lot of these opportunities. Mr. Suvarna, you know, alluded to one of them, which I confronted very directly when I was teaching medical science at Thomas Edison Technology. Some students, they're not going to take a class if it's not going to give their GPA a bump with that weighted thing. And so, this isn't, if this course isn't going to give you that honors bump, they're not interested. And we have a lot of students that they're going to take AP or IB because they think it looks better on their resume. And we aren't really encouraging them to think about the fact that actually your dual enrollment classes give you actual guaranteed college credit, because there's a bit of a bill of goods that's been sold out there that students seek. If they, they take that AP course and they get like a four or five on that exam, that translates to college credit. Not true. It depends on what course it is and where you're going to college. But, but college credit does transfer. And so, we need to kind of flip some of that conversation, I think, a little bit. But also, one of the conversations that I had very directly with students who were in our CTE programs, and they talked about the fact that, and I would say, "Why, why aren't more of your friends, considering cybersecurity, you know, medical science, why aren't more of your friends taking advantage of these courses?" And it's because it's such a hu, it was such a huge sacrifice, because they got no other credit. I think we are adjusting some of our, our graduation credit requirements a little bit. But back then, is if you took a CTE completer, first it counted for no, no, it, you know, it, it might give you an elective credit, but that was it. But if you took it, you had to complete it, and you had to take an elective. And they couldn't get any other form of graduation credit for those courses. And so, when I look at something at, at the state level, if you're going to keep pushing all of these initiatives, they need to, we need to, being advocating very clearly and very directly, that we need to take a hardcore look at everything we force a kid to do to get a high school diploma in the state of Maryland, and ask what, why are we, why do we make them do this, and does it still matter? And what can we do to reduce the burdens and the barriers for students to take advantage of all these other things? So, for instance, when I was teaching, my students were getting college-level anatomy, physiology, medical terminology, medical skills, they were getting a healthcare license. They got no credit for that. That should have been a science credit. If we're going to keep this tech credit, which I, every, no secret here, everybody knows, I think that tech credit needs to go. But if you take cybersecurity, if you take network operations, it doesn't count for your tech credit.
Correct.
Because if you're taking a CTE course, it can't count for any other graduation credit requirement. That is ridiculous. And it's a barrier. And it prevents some students from taking advantage of these classes. And so, if we could start talking about these things from a pragmatic place, you know, students in computer-aided design and architecture, they should be able to get a fine arts credit or math credit. If, I mean, look at the curriculum, look at what they're doing. Tell me that doesn't satisfy the criteria for a math credit or a fine arts credit. Same thing with students in plumbing, or HVAC, or electrical. That, look at what they're doing and the work that they're doing and the physics that they're applying. That should count as a science credit or math credit. And nobody is having that conversation on a practical level at the state. They're just adding more and more things to what we're, we're making students do. And I think we need to start having a very pragmatic conversation about how are we going to make it more possible for them to do things, for students to take advantage of great opportunities and really have a meaningful high school experience. So, getting off my soapbox there, but there are barriers. It, it isn't just, do they know about it? Or is it located, we do have geographic barriers as well. But there are also other things that are in the way and preventing students from taking advantage of some of these opportunities. And, and we can start talking about that more.
Dr. Moran, did you have your lead on?
I just wanted to respond to something that Ms. Evans said in regards to, you know, you can have all the websites in, in the world, but the, the websites don't get the word out as much as a, as a, as a human, you know, interaction does. And I just wanted to, I wanted to commit to the fact that we have our parent community coordinators, and we have pupil personnel workers. And I think we need to flip like interventions in a lot of ways upside down, because when they go out, a lot of the conversations are about chronic absenteeism and engagement in school. And nothing gets a student more engaged in school than one of these opportunities that, that are listed up there. So, I think, I just want to commit to when we go out, being a community, you know, and communications liaison around that. Dr. Taylor has already talked a great deal about the customer service component to this. Customer service isn't provided through a website. Customer service is provided through, you know, direct one-to-one communication and connecting with our families and sharing that resource in a very personal way, which, you know, our families respond to, and will take that, the, the opportunity to take advantage of it. So, I just, I just wanted to say that.
Mr. Suvarna had his light on, and we are running late, so just ask you all to be very brief, please.
Yeah, I'll be quick with it. But the one thing that I wanted to say is just echoing Ms. Harris's comments about understanding that a lot of students wouldn't take these courses if they aren't weighted. And so, how are we making sure that our students now know that some, that some of these opportunities are weighted? Because, you know, I, I went on to the page that, that we had just talked about, and nowhere on the page, it doesn't mention, hey, like this is, these can be weighted opportunities for, for students. And I know it's a very recent change, so maybe incorporating some of that language into the website, into the flyers, just so that students very much know, and then seeing how that affects the numbers in the future. Thank you.
Mrs. Evans?
Real quick, and to your point, you are absolutely right. I was just at, I was volunteering at the Rainbow Christian Center, giving out food, and they talked about the PCC at Burnt Mails. I can't rem, I wish I could say her name, Dina, or something. I can't remember. They spoke very highly about her and her talking, and she always communicated to this area where a lot of our families and students are in need of what type of supports are available. So, you are absolutely right, that I just wanted to just give someone a shout-out at Burnt Mails, a PCC, and just acknowledge what you said. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. And Dr. Moran, Dr. Pugh, I would like to follow up with Ms. Harris's point about advocacy to the state to change some of the things that are preventing our students. So, I'd love to talk with you offline to, to see what can be done, what, maybe what things we are already doing, because they are real. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for the presentation. All right, we are moving on to our next agenda item, number eight.
Thank you, Madam President. Super excited about my visit on Tuesday to Quench Orchard High School, where I had the opportunity to interact with some of our teachers engaged in summer professional learning. We have a ton of things that are happening to move our school division forward. And as a part of that, professional learning is a critical component in order for us to meet the needs of a diverse group of learners. All of our professional learning that you will hear in today's overview is grounded in the MCPS Equitable Teaching and Learning Framework, created in response to the findings from the anti-racist system audit. The professional learning emphasizes anti-racist, culturally-relevant and culturally-responsive teaching practices. You will also hear about the preparation work to design and deliver engaging professional learning that will highlight the streamlined approach to, that the team uses to evaluate the impact of our professional learning on an equitable teaching and learning standpoint. Thank you to the team that is here before us and the many hands working behind the scenes to create, organize, plan, and deliver outstanding professional learning. And so, I will turn it over at this point to our Chief Strategy Officer, Stephanie Sharon.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Good afternoon, everybody. I do want to take a moment to introduce who I'm joined with today. We got a, we got a wonderful cross-office crew, and I think, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to bring a cross-office section to this presentation is to highlight the fact that professional learning does not live in one place. It is the responsibility of all of us, and it's, and our opportunity to show how that alignment and coherence comes through. So, today, I'm joined today by Dr. Margie Lope-Mustasos, Director of our Department of District-Wide Professional Learning, Dr. Keisha Logan, Director of Department of Pre-K through 12 Curriculum and, and Curriculum and District-Wide Programs, Ms. Tamara Hewlett, I was making sure she made it today, because I know we were, we were, had some conflicts, Director of the Department of English Learners and Multilingual Education, and Ms. Diana Wiles, Associate Superintendent for the Office of Special Education. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. So, this slide is to real, is, is built really to show you and, and a, a quick visual of how our summer professional learning is completely guided by our district-level strategic plan, which is linked to our Equitable Teaching and Learning Framework that Dr. Taylor highlighted, which is connected to our school improvement planning process. That coherence and alignment needs to be there in order to ensure that the professional learning that we're providing is actually meeting the needs of both the teachers and the students that we serve. For this presentation, I want to frame this from the lens of what we are offering. You're going to hear a little bit about what we are offering this summer, we're right in the middle of that professional learning, why we are offering it. And the big question, and I know Ms. Evans, and I know Ms. Harris stepped away, but she was there, one of our last strategic planning committee meetings, where we talk about how do we know we had an impact? What is the impact of the professional learning, and how are we assessing that impact? So, that's how we're going to frame our conversation today. And what's important to note is that that has been the primary focus and the goal of district-wide professional learning for this upcoming year, is the accountability component. How are we evaluating the return on our investment, and how are we determining the impact that we're having on students in the classroom? Next slide. So, this kind of provides you, this slide is just going to provide you kind of a bigger look from that previous slide on the alignment and that coherence. All of our professional learning was created through this lens. You are all very familiar with the three pillars of the strategic plan, right? Academic excellence, well-being, family engagement, professional and operational excellence. That is all connected to the Equitable Teaching and Learning Framework. The Equitable Teaching and Learning Framework is what we have determined and decided through a research-based process and was informed by the anti-racist audit of what we need to ensure that is happening every day in the classroom to make sure that teaching and learning is happening at the highest level. That is directly linked to the strategic plan, which can also be seen through the school improvement planning process. And I'm not going to read through to you the different connections, but just to highlight an example, we have our academic excellence pillar, which is directly aligned to the pillar or the component of the Equitable Teaching and Learning Framework, which focuses on curriculum instruction, learning, and assessment, which again is linked to the school improvement plan, where every school has an academic goal for literacy and mathematics. That through line is highlighted for all of our teachers through the professional learning that we provide every, every day this summer. Next slide. So, what does the research say? I think what's really important to share is that there is a copious amount of research that says professional learning is a key lever in improving teaching and learning for students in the classroom every day. It is a key lever. And when you look at districts around the country, it is one of the largest investments, financial investments that school systems make, is in professional learning. We know that when you're trying to improve professional learning at scale, and you do it well, it improves the teaching and learning, it keeps effective educators in our profession, and it contributes to the success of innovation and initiatives throughout the district. This is particularly important, from what the research says, around how we are creating opportunities for foundational literacy and numeracy, social-emotional learning, focus on equitable teaching and learning, inclusive instruction and curriculum. Those are what they say are like the, the biggest areas of professional learning that you need to provide. And you're going to see in this presentation that we aligned all of our professional learning with that, which again is aligned to our strategic plan. Next slide. So, here are the guiding questions that the team, the cross-office team, as I stated, who has been working together since January on determining what professional learning was going to be critical this summer for our, for our, for our teachers, in order to start the school year off strong. So, the first question that they asked themselves as, as the cross-office team is, what are the skills, knowledge, and habits that do teachers and leaders need in order to be able to do all of those things that they need to do in the classroom and at the schools? In order to do that, they evaluated academic achievement data. They looked at well-being data. They collected feedback from previous professional learning to see, where did we hit the mark? Where did we not hit the mark and what teachers and students needed? They also said, "Wow, what new curriculum are we rolling out that we really need to make sure that we have a clear foundational understanding of?" They used that data to then inform the what, what do we need to do? And then, they looked at the last two questions, which are, how are we effectively collecting, organizing, analyzing, and monitoring the impact of professional learning? And what does the data tell us about our professional learning? To make sure that they were planning for that on the front end, and making sure that they were implementing throughout, not just the summer, but throughout next year. And you're going to hear more about that in the presentation today. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lope-Mustasos to get into more details about the plan.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Dr. Sharon. As she men, as she mentioned, Ms. Sharon.
Thanks.
You're working on it. As she mentioned, our office led a cross-office team to determine what professional learning would be offered, when and how, and most importantly, how we are going to be monitoring the impact of that professional learning. So, I want to start by thanking the team for all of that effort. I know many of them, some of them are in the room today, so that's been a great effort. And we're really excited about what we are offering this summer. Next slide, please. We are underway, or in the midst of offering 111 different, unique learning opportunities. Thirty-three of those learning opportunities are just for staff in elementary Thirty-three of those learning opportunities are just for staff in elementary schools. Thirty-six of those opportunities are for secondary staff, and 42 of those opportunities are for staff in both elementary and secondary schools. Next slide, please. We anticipate that about 6,500 staff are going to be participating in the learning this summer. To date, we have over 4,000 staff that have already engaged. That would be school leaders, teachers, paraeducators, and support staff like administrative secretaries. We are offering 82 sessions that are at Tier One, which means that it's mandatory or required for a particular group. As an example, that would be the literacy professional learning, and that's required for all teachers pre-K to fifth grade. Then we have 29 Tier Two sessions, and that is optional for specific groups to attend. And an example of that would be we have best practices for world language teachers in secondary schools. So any world language teacher, grade six through 12, could decide to take that type of professional learning. So that's all underway. And next slide, please. As we plan the professional learning, I wanted to talk a little bit about what the feedback has been in the past, so where we started. So we used, as Ms. Sharon mentioned, we used previous feedback on last summer's professional learning as a big indicator, along with some of the other factors of what curriculum is being offered and what we saw from past professional learning. We designed the professional learning grounded in our anti-racist and culturally responsive practice, as we have been doing, based on the audit feedback. We have a variety of in-person and on-demand learning, so some of it is synchronous, live, and some of it's asynchronous, where teachers can engage in the learning at their own pace on their own time and then report back in. We have heard really loud and clear from school leaders and from teachers that they need more support working with emerging multilingual learners and students receiving special education services. So you're going to hear about that learning a little bit later on in the presentation today. And in addition, we really know that it's crucial for this learning to be followed up with ongoing and support job embedded in the school year. So we're going to talk about that, too, because we know that for this learning to stick, it can't be a one-and-done professional learning experience. So we've accounted for that. Next slide, please. One of the ways we've worked on this is that out of our office, we designed a professional learning for all of the facilitators of professional learning. We had 185 participants from over 28 different departments. And we really, the purpose of this was to provide participants with the tools they need to design professional learning that will have an impact on students and that we can measure that, we can monitor that. And so that, we got a lot of positive feedback on that. And from that, we are all using across the system the standards that we created for professional learning. We have a common design template that everybody's planning from, the same template with guiding questions in it. And then everybody will be working on impact reports to evaluate the impact of their professional learning. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you a little bit of focus on what I mean whenever, how we're looking at that design of the professional learning. If you think back to a traditional classroom, the teacher taught a skill, you had some practice with that skill, maybe you took a quiz or an exit card to see how you did with understanding that skill. And then often that skill shows up on a unit assessment, and you show your attainment of that skill over time. Well, adult learning goes in a very similar path. We teach the skill, we have some guided practice with that skill where folks get some feedback. We then observe that skill being implemented in the classroom. And then, most importantly, we look at that impact on students. So we have really pushed our designers, as they create this professional learning this year, to think about that, evaluating and planning for each step of that learning and looking at that impact for the students. And that's a bit of a shift for us, that we are so intentionally planning for each step of that learning in the professional learning and that we are monitoring that impact. And each staff member will be creating, each team that's leading professional learning will be creating impact reports that we'll look at at a district level to decide, you know, how did that professional learning go? To what extent was it effective? And what do we need to provide? What support will look like in the upcoming year? Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Keisha Logan, and she's now going to talk more about the professional learning and the alignment and coherence across the system.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lope-Mustasos. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. As was shared, alignment and coherence are a strategic focus for our intentional plan for district-wide professional learning. And we also know that professional learning has the most impact when it is ongoing, when it is job embedded, and when there's opportunities for staff members to receive meaningful feedback, and then they have the opportunity to reflect and then make necessary changes and adaptations. And so in order for that meaningful feedback to be provided, with this in mind, we visualize our plan for professional learning to be like a waterfall, much like the one you see on the screen. Our highly impactful and effective teaching and learning strategies are flowing into our schools, ultimately supporting our students, and they're doing so in a parallel way, starting with the district strategic plan right at the top. That's what guides our work. That plan, as well as multiple measures of data and research informed by the Equitable Teaching and Learning Framework, provides the alignment and the coherence that's necessary for our instructional priorities to then become the anchor in all of the professional learning that's being offered throughout the summer and really throughout the school year. Okay, so then you see that happening not only for our school-based staff, but also for our central services staff. So that if you're going to be providing meaningful feedback to staff members in the schoolhouse, you need to know what to look for. You need to know what the messages are. You need to have an understanding of the curriculum and in order to provide that feedback and to provide staff the opportunities to reflect as well. So this is how we are planning our professional learning. It's professional learning for school-based staff and central services leaders, because everyone is then receiving those consistent messages focused on the same instructional priorities, which I'm going to talk about in a moment to highlight those for you. And this is essential for the most effective and efficient changes to happen for our students. We can go to the next slide, please. So here's where I am just going to outline for you those instructional priorities. For this presentation, you know, there's lots of different professional learning opportunities that we could elevate. For example, our administrators are currently immersed this summer in training designed to build their capacity around anti-hate, anti-bias. For example, there are learning opportunities happening like that offered from many offices. But for this presentation, we're going to narrow, we're going to focus our discussion on instructional priorities and professional learning around mathematics and literacy. And so our strategic focus for administrators, for our professional learning, really is honing in on our special populations through the professional learning that we are providing. Our instructional priorities for math continue to be framed around what has become our mantra: know the math, know the students. And this should hopefully sound familiar to you. The goal being that we're preparing our students to be mathematical thinkers. And so we're going to hone in on three priority areas this summer and going into this school year in the area of pre-K to 12 mathematics. Number one, students must be critically thinking and doing the math, and in doing so, collaborating with peers. We want actively engaged students in mathematics classrooms, talking about math, grappling with math. In order for that to happen, there's instructional priority area number two in pre-K-12 math. Teachers must consistently release control in the classroom so that students have the time and space for that engagement and that discourse to really happen. And so our professional learning will be focusing on these two areas. This only happens when teachers and staff know the math and know the students, but also when administrators and school leaders have provided those structures and conditions that are necessary for teachers to have the time and place to effectively do the curriculum study and the collaborative planning that's necessary for this to happen in an ongoing way to monitor the progress that students are making and make changes where necessary. For literacy, which you also see on this slide, our pre-K-12 literacy instructional priorities, they're grounded in five pillars. That's that blue continuum that you see on the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. The five pillars begin with building those strong foundational skills for our early learners, coupled with equitable access to a viable curriculum and explicit and systematic grade-level instruction. So this leads to priority area number one for pre-K-12 literacy, that's successfully implementing our new Elementary English Language Arts Curriculum Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, CKLA. I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about how that's going in just a moment. We're really excited about it. And at the secondary level, if you start with pillar number four, focuses on literacy instruction that's embedded across content areas. And we've been focusing on that at the secondary level for the past couple of years. Implementation of evidence-based literacy strategies across all content areas at all of our secondary schools, so that as students go to any of our classrooms in our secondary schools, they are being presented with, by our teachers with literacy strategies that can help them to be able to grapple with and to really break down those complex texts that they see in their social studies classrooms and their science classrooms, for example. So our administrators this summer, they're currently engaging in required professional learning about these instructional priorities. And they're thinking about how they're ensuring that they're incorporated within their school improvement plans. How are they, they're working with their instructional leadership teams, to think about how these are incorporated into the action plans that they are developing and how their goals are then reflected and can be monitored through these priorities as well at the school level? As well as, what are the needs for the students in their special populations? So the learning that's being provided to the administrators is through this lens. What is it that your emergent multilingual learners need in order to achieve at the highest levels? How about students receiving special education services and your highly able learners as well? If we can go to the next slide, please. Here are just two examples. We could have included many others, but we just wanted to give you just two quick examples of professional learning that's happening this summer that's connected to our instructional priorities in literacy and math. So as mentioned, during the upcoming school year, we're implementing the new English Language Arts Curriculum Amplify CKLA across all of our elementary schools. Our teachers, our leaders are all currently engaging in that training to support that curriculum implementation. This includes our pre-K to five teachers, focus teachers, staff development teachers, special educators, ELD teachers, reading specialists, administrators, all engaging in two days of training. Our shift to structured literacy has really yielded positive results for our students as we have been studying the science of reading research over the past couple of years. And we are anticipating that this new high-quality curriculum will support students who have been struggling with foundational skills in grades three to five, support all students with building strong content knowledge and developing those critical writing skills, which has been an area of need for us that have been identified through the data. So we're very pleased and excited about what we're seeing so far in training. So far, 95% of the over 3,000 teachers and leaders whom I just outlined for you that have already attended their two-day training responded to the evaluation survey that they feel prepared to implement the curriculum at the start of the school year as a result of the training that they have received. As Dr. Lope-Mustasos says, it doesn't stop with a two-day training this summer. It is important to note that through the work that will be done with reading specialists throughout the school year, the Elementary English Language Arts teams, in fact, multiple supports throughout all of Central Office will be supporting our schools to ensure that this implementation of this new curriculum is a success for our students. For the math example that you also see here, the successful completion of Algebra II is one of our milestones on our pathway to college career and community readiness. So we've made revisions to that curriculum as a result of learning walks that were completed at every high school this past spring, feedback from teachers, as well as our student data that we analyze on an ongoing basis. With this professional learning, teachers will learn about innovative teaching practices with the intended results directly connected to our instructional priority of creating engagement, engaging classrooms in the Algebra II classes for our students, leading to deeper conceptual understanding of the content reflective of that goal, knowing the math, and improving student achievement outcomes, of course, related to this milestone. So that's required. Tier One professional learning for all Algebra II teachers that is happening this summer as well. The learning and support will continue throughout the year as secondary math leaders engage in their monthly leader meetings with the secondary math team and receive that ongoing support, as we know is extremely important. And so we anticipate results will improve for our students, and specifically, we will be monitoring the improvement for our students who are Black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, or EMLs, students receiving special education services. We keep those students, our focus students, in mind, not only as we are planning and designing this professional learning, but as we are monitoring the impact and the supports that are needed throughout the school year. So I'll now turn things over to Ms. Tamara Hewlett to discuss learning specific to English Language Development.
Good afternoon, Presidents Silas Streeman, Burz of the Board, Dr. Taylor. Again, my name is Tamara Hewlett. I am the Director of the Department of English Learners and Multilingual Education. Happy to be here with you today. This summer, our department is offering multiple opportunities to engage in professional learning, some Tier Two, which means it's optional, and some Tier One. Our heaviest lift this summer is with our instructional leadership teams, which includes our administrators at the secondary level. All ILTs from our secondary schools are engaging in professional learning called a Functional Language Approach to Content Instruction. Our primary goal for this session is to ensure that schools have a solid understanding of the English Language Development proficiency data of our students in our program and to start that understanding of the intentional moves facilitators, educational facilitators need to make in order to make language functional for our students. Students need to have language be made visible for them in their content courses. So this summer's training has been working to build the capacity of our department leaders to learn about the various tools and approaches that will embed both language development and content instruction into our daily content courses. So there's a shared responsibility, you've heard me say this before, that we must all own for the success of our emergent multilingual learners. And when we do, we expect to see growth in both English Language Development and in our content areas. As of today, we've had the wonderful opportunity to facilitate learning to 22 of our middle schools, 22 of our high schools, and three of our special schools. This means we've engaged with over 850 secondary leaders. We have 18 middle schools and four high schools remaining, and they will engage in this professional learning next week. So by the end of next week, we would have trained all secondary instructional leadership teams. We've delivered professional learning, we've provided evaluations, and all of our schools are completing those evaluations at the end of the sessions. Our department will use the cumulative results to determine our next steps for additional professional learning and support to schools. Additionally, schools have developed action plans during the session that we facilitate, and we will use those action plans to follow up and provide further support that is targeted to each school. These action plans serve as a roadmap tailored specifically to each school and their context that will support our department's collaboration with our content partners around supporting specific departments and supporting specific departments throughout the school year. I will now turn it over to Ms. I will now turn it over to Ms. Diana Wiles, who will share about the efforts from the Office of Special Education.
Good afternoon, President Sylvesteri, Dr. Taylor, and board members. I'm excited to be here today to talk about the professional learning efforts for the Office of Special Education. This summer, OSE is responsible for planning and co-planning over 30 professional learning opportunities for both our staff in schools and our central office administrators and instructional specialists, as well as our school leaders. Two of the most significant focus areas for the Office of Special Education is both the instructional piece, the specially-designed instruction for our students, and then compliance with the IDEA. So we have been working very closely with OSIP to make sure that we are embedding specially-designed instruction into the professional learning that's being provided to all of our teachers so that our general education teachers, as well as our special educators, are learning alongside of each other. The goal is that they are prepared to plan together, particularly with our new Amplify curriculum. In addition to that, we are focused on ensuring that our ALO students are not left out. And so the professional learning, for example, with Amplify, is also being directly supported with professional learning for our ALO teachers to ensure that they are being prepared to deliver that curriculum to our students who are non-diploma-bound. With regard to compliance training, we want to ensure that our principals, the numerous new principals that we have joining us this school year are prepared to be instructional and compliance leaders in the buildings. And so we are working closely with them through our Resolution and Compliance Unit to ensure that they understand what the compliance requirements are for the development of IEPs, data monitoring of IEPs, and of all of the behavioral requirements of implementation. In addition to that, we're providing professional learning on de-escalation strategies, behavior management strategies, to all teachers that are in our discrete services, who need either refreshers or who are newly joining those classrooms to ensure that we are meeting students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Now I will turn it back over to Dr. Lo Mousatos.
Thanks. So as you heard, we have a lot of exciting professional learning going on this summer. And this is just the beginning, right? As I mentioned in the previous sequence, it starts in the summer, but it's that ongoing work into the school year. So each team is really working on structures of support for both the school leaders and the staff to implement that professional learning in the schools. Many of the teams have developed some look-for's that the school leaders can then use when they go and observe the implementation of the learning. The teams will also be out observing professional learning, the implementation of the professional learning, to monitor effectiveness of that implementation. We'll look at that from a district-wide view to determine our next steps with professional learning and use those for accountability measures and alignment to the SIP and all of that work as we go into the school year. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to share about the professional learning that we have. To see that complete list of all of those professional learning sessions we offer, you can go to the MCPS homepage. If you go into the search field, the easiest thing to do is type in "professional learning." It'll take you to our webpage, and there, there's a dashboard that you'll click on, and you'll see that complete list of all the professional learning that we offer. And that's all we have for today. I'll turn it back to you all for discussion.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues to turn their lights on if they have any questions, and I'll get started with, I wanted to better understand Slide 9 about the summer facilitator learning, your work around cohesion. So this is work that you did with the trainers to make sure that they were delivering a consistent and cohesive training, for lack of a better word, across the district. Can you just explain it again?
Yep, that's exactly right. So it's for the people who are delivering all the professional learning out there. So we want to make sure that when they were designing the professional learning, they're really thinking about that adult learner and that adult learning process, so that they are planning for teaching them the concept, giving them some time for some guided practice with feedback in the learning, and then setting them up for success on what does that implementation look like when you take back that skill and implement it in your role? And then, you know, support on how you would implement that in the classroom or in your role as a school leader. So we were really working to get some consistency on the quality of the delivery of that professional learning across the system.
So these 185 participants were making it up on their own?
Well, people were doing, so 185 participants, meaning like instructional specialists, supervisors, these are all folks who have previously designed and delivered professional learning, but we weren't all using the same standards, expectations. They were designing professional learning in different ways. So we wanted to bring some consistency and alignment to the format, the way we deliver professional learning across the system.
Yeah, just to add to that, Ms. Sylvesteri, so one of the charges of the Department of District-Wide Professional Learning when it was created, and one of the pieces of feedback that we heard was professional learning was kind of like all over the place, right? Not that there wasn't good professional learning or good quality professional learning out there, but that alignment to what they were doing and why they were doing it was like all over the place. So one of the first things that the department did was they identified standards for professional learning that were aligned with the research. Then they trained all people that provide professional learning on those standards. Then they said, okay, when you're providing professional learning, these are the things that you need to hit and you need to make sure you address that align with our strategic planning goals. Like, so for instance, we know one of our core pieces of work is making sure that we're being anti-racist and culturally responsive, right? So it is critically important that that is a consideration in every professional learning, not that it's a separate entity. So those guiding questions and the template that's being provided to the people providing the learning creates that unification so that it doesn't feel also separate, so that there's connections and ties to it.
Okay. I guess I was imagining that if I'm going to teach how to integrate content to ELD learners, there would be a syllabus and something that I'm using to deliver the content.
There is, but I think what you have, there's best practices for adult learning, right? About how you deliver adult learning? And then there are guiding questions that the Department of District-Wide Professional Learning created to make sure that everybody is aligning their professional learning with certain guiding questions that align with our strategic plan and the goals of our system. And then, so it's like a template, right? When you think about like a template of how to do it, and then they're plugging in all those critical pieces into that from their content, making sure that they're addressing those standards.
Okay.
Kind of similar to like, there's always a, there's a best practice when you look at a lesson plan, right? So when teachers learn how to lesson plan for students, while the content might all be different, there is, I don't want to say a formula, because we don't say it's like a formula, but there are, you know, you have to state your objectives, you know? You might pre-assess your students to figure out where they're at, then you're going to do that, you know what I mean? And then you have to be able to deliver that with coherence.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Ms. Yang?
Yes, thank you. I know that every summer, this is a huge endeavor. It's a very large school system with a lot of employees. This is a 16-page slide presentation, and I wonder if it can be made a little bit simpler for our consumption, right? When you talk about what, when, how, and I really want to understand, in elementary schools, what is your focus for ELA? Is there mandatory training? Okay? And how many participate? How many days? For secondary, in English, in math, in social study, or whatever area, what is your focus? You might have a focus every single year, or maybe you not, but there are things you are focusing on. I think that will help me get a much better idea of what really we are working on. And then, from another point of oversight, I want to know how much this costs us, right? As a system, training is very important, truly. We all believe in it, but that also takes investment. So for me, when I look at the budget, I need to understand, if we are doing this much training at this level, this is how much this summer cost. If we want to enhance it, what might it take? I think for our greater audience and other policymakers, this is important information for us to have. Now I have, I appreciate some very specific example, for example, for elementary school Amplify training, I appreciate the example of secondary leadership, EML, understanding, and our compliance to get our leaders to understand the compliance issues. Okay. So I have two questions to ask. Do we have trainings, mandatory trainings, for our general ed teachers on special education this summer?
So part of the planning and co-planning process was for instructional specialists and supervisors in the Office of Special Education to work on the development of those professional learning opportunities for general educators. So for Amplify, as an example, we had staff that was there to support the development of those professional learning opportunities that are being delivered to general educators. So we want to embed specially-designed instruction into the professional learning that everyone is receiving, so that it doesn't feel like something that is something else, that's exclusive to, that is, you know, the pull-out model of instruction for students with IEPs. And we continue to work, we continue to work on how we do that in every area. So if there is professional learning for physical education, how are we embedding that so that general educators are hearing? How do I provide specially-designed instruction? How do I provide accommodations to students?
So I'm trying to paraphrase and internalize it.
Sure.
So in our elementary school Amplify training, there is a component of how to work with, how to enrich or how to support for our special education students.
Sure, yes.
Am I correct? Okay, then, same question goes to our multi-emergent language learners. Anything like that for our general education teachers?
Yeah, so same as Ms. Wiles, the team that worked with Amplify, the instruction while it was led by the ELA team, there was cross-office collaboration. So members of our department sat in there, there's a whole section around a language component that comes with Amplify that not only goes to the ELD teachers, but the classroom teachers as well. So everyone's hearing those practices that are necessary to ensure that instruction, language and content in tandem, is happening. That's just an example of, you know, what's, at the ELA example of how it's working. For our two-way immersion schools, we co-designed and co-delivered the learning. And so the two-way immersion teachers who are getting the Amplify training by Amplify, we also have an MCPS person in the room facilitating with Amplify. So it's very intentional, very intentional moves to ensure that language and content, especially design instruction, is made accessible to all of our general ed teachers, because that's really where our students spend the most time. So in that fashion, that's how they're getting access to it.
So I think in your presentation, when you give specific examples, you might have covered this. So a feedback will be, I want to know for the secondary level, right? So if that can be also clear in our slides, right, how special education and EML are included, if they are not separate, if they are included, then that will be useful information for us. Thank you so much.
And was Slide 14 and 15 for secondary?
Yes, that's specifically for secondary language development and not just our ELD teachers. So at this training, we had ILT and ELD teachers coming together to engage in this learning, because again, ELD at the secondary level is one course out of the child's full day. So we need our content teachers to understand what is it that, how do you make language functional from a math lens, from a social studies lens, from a science lens? So they all came together to engage in some learning as an instructional leadership team. And so we've already been out to support some schools who have, this week is Leadership Week, so we've already been out supporting some schools on taking that next step for our summer training. So, you know, again, not one and done. It's something that our content teachers are going to need continuous learning on, and they're like ripe for it and excited and want to continue to build their capacity. So yes, that, these two, this slide really exemplified content, really getting in front of content teachers mainly to make visible language.
You got my point? You said ILT and ELD?
Teachers, yes. So our instructional leadership teams at our middle and high schools, that does not mean our English Language Development teachers are a part of that leadership team. So we wanted to make sure that the language leaders in our secondary schools are also coming together, because they're in planning sessions with different PLCs, professional learning communities. And it's important that we see each other as assets and use each other's skills to make sure that our students are getting what they need.
My question is, if I'm a social, American history teacher, am I getting this training?
So the department chairs, the social study department lead is the one who got the training. And so now that learning is going to get distilled into their department meetings. So our approach this summer was to pull the leaders first, to be able to, you know, activate their thinking and think about, how am I going to lead my department to ensure that language development is being embedded into our daily, our planning and our daily?
Is this the first time we're doing that?
This is the first time.
When I started the board five years ago, looking at Miss Hazel back there.
Yeah. Well, remember, we did it for elementary last year, and it's such huge positive results. We couldn't do it for the entire system. One, it's a huge lift, right? But we're going, we're moving. So this is the first time for secondary, and it's, the feedback is great.
Yep. I know it's a culture shift, it's also monetary. Every time there's a budget cut, we cut back on training.
Correct.
But this is where we need to be. When I, the story I wanted to tell, when I first joined the board, I visited a high school, and a social studies teacher says, "Help! My class is full of English Language learners, and I'm a social studies teacher. I need some support. I'm getting nothing."
Still today, that happens.
So here we are, we're making progress, but we have to keep our eye on the prize, because how do you teach a room full of students that don't speak English if you don't have the supports to provide the scaffolds that they need to learn the content? So I'm very happy that it's finally happening, so thank you so much for that. And Ms. Raveta-Aven?
Okay. So I'm sorry, I'm very visual. This was a lot, there was a lot of errors on this. So here are some of my questions. So going to page six, right? So you, we provided the system 111 professional learning opportunities over the summer, correct? Out of those, how many were mandatory? Because you said that there is tier-one and tier-two.
Out of those, 82 were mandatory.
Okay, so that goes to the tier-one sessions. Okay, so that goes to here. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, I'm following, I'm following. So then, between elementary-focused sessions, and then you have the pink, that's elementary and secondary focus. So those are for both elementary and middle school?
Yes, or high school. So some sessions are for both, all K-12. So, some sessions are for both, all K-12.
Give me an example.
Like a teaching strategy versus?
Got you, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that helps, all right, clear on that. Okay, so then, let's go to page seven. So, then you said you, you're, so this is not how many people have signed up. This is how many people you hope signed up, or hope that 6,500 people you hope is going to take the training?
That's right. So, we look at what the mandatory sessions are, for example, all those, how many pre-K to fifth grade teachers that we have? We can start to calculate how many teachers we anticipate will come based on the mandatory, and then based on the past, we look at how many people have taken tier-two sessions in the past to kind of ballpark what we anticipate for the upcoming year.
So, can you help me compare it to last year?
This is less than last year. We anticipate we will have fewer people taking professional learning this year as opposed to last year. We're offering less this year for a few reasons. One, we're trying to improve quality over quantity of professional learning. Also, coming back to the budget, we have less money for professional learning this, this year. And teachers have told us loud and clear in the feedback, they don't want to be taking professional learning all summer long. They want job-embedded, ongoing support in the classroom. And what's really exciting about that is the research supports it. The research supports that, to really make the change, we need to see ongoing job-embedded support in schools. So, we're really, we think this is a good shift.
So, that goes to my next follow-up question. So, that was a lot of the feedback that we have gotten from teachers over the years, right? That they want a more fall and spring. So, then, what is, what is the plan to offer those in the fall and spring?
We do have fall and spring offerings for some of the big mandatory professional learning. Not all of it can be offered in the fall and the spring, to be quite honest. But for the big, the mandatory, the curriculum change, curriculum changes, we do understand. So, we try and get people before they leave for the summer. And then, for those who couldn't make it in the summer, we have a few fall options.
Okay, then I want to understand a little bit better on slide nine, because I think from President Sylvester's question, I got some of it, but I just wanted to get a, to get a clear idea. So, you have 28 departments, right? What's the total of the 28 departments? Like a ballpark? Like how many people, like, okay, so you, you got 185 folks that came from 28 departments. What's the total of the people that make up the 28 departments?
How many staff are in the central office? I'm not, I don't, I don't have that number, but we could, we could look at that number. These are folks who are delivering, folks who deliver professional learning in the summer. Many come from OCA, the curriculum offices that are represented here, and some come from the OSSI.
Okay.
Are you trying to get at that, how many, what percentage of the total participated?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, and then, the question I had with the 185, are these folks that volunteer to do this? Or are these folks that you, as part of their job?
It's part of their job. So, part of their job responsibility is to deliver professional learning. So, everybody who has a responsibility to deliver professional learning, we offer professional learning for them.
Okay, so then, my next question, let's keep going. So, when it comes to the EML learners, let's go there. I, I did have a question of, what is then, at the summer, the tier one? Like, what is the expectation of tier one for your department?
So, tier one for the system means mandatory.
No, correct, so that's what I'm asking, for the, for what we're offering out of those trainings?
Yes.
Right, how many of them are mandatory?
One is mandatory, the one that we are offering to our secondary leaders.
Okay, and that is focused with the language approach?
Functional language approach, yes.
And is that focused to a certain group of folks? Like, is that elementary, middle school, high school, or is that like?
Middle and high school.
I'm sorry?
Middle and high school instructional leadership teams and their English language development teachers.
Okay, because we did elementary last year.
We did elementary last year.
And when we did it last year?
Yes.
What was the participation?
We had over 2,000 participants. Elementary schools are larger. In terms of building counts, we have more elementary schools than our middle and high schools. But the elementary instructional leadership teams are smaller. So, we're seeing great turnout from our middle and high schools instructional leadership teams.
Okay, and then, how many are tier two?
I think we have three or four tier-two professional learning opportunities.
For the EML?
Yes.
Could we ask you to, is that the same, same subject? Same focus?
No.
Okay, you know, for me, it would be really helpful just to understand what is it that we're offering? And, and then see what the participation is, and if that is what the teachers are wanting. Like, is there like a way that we, we take like a, an assessment, or we ask it to, because? Or help me to understand, is this only for the leadership? Or is this for the, for the teacher in, like, Board Member Sylvester said, "Help me, I have a room full of EML students, and I don't know how to teach them." So, because it sounded to me that this was just leadership.
So, the tier-one facilitation that's happening is for our instructional leadership teams and our English language development teams. So, that's our secondary two schools. Our element, because that's our major lift, that's at the secondary level, our secondary team on our department side isn't offering many more tier-one, tier-two instructional summer learnings. But we are, because we have, for example, something that's going to happen in eight of our high schools. So, we're having professional learning for that. We have, you know, some of our interventions, like Read 180, Math 180. We have professional learning that we're running for that. So, we have multiple other trainings, but I don't think you will see the participation rates really indicating much, because it's dependent on many variables. So, for example, for our Read 180 training, it's for those who are new to teaching Read 180. And so, only a specific subset of teachers are going to do that. For our training with Speak Agent, again, I'm still, still on secondary, we have eight schools that are going to be using this new resource to help with biology and NSL government supplements to help our EMLs, because we know that this past fall, students had to take those end-of-course assessments. We wanted additional supports in language development. So, that's something we're starting new. So, that's only going to be open to eight schools. That's not indicative of the demand. And then, we are also limited with the number of seats we can open up for tier-two. So, just because it's a tier-two instructional opportunity does not mean it's open to everybody. We do have limits around how many seats we can open for those additional opportunities.
I help understand, how do you choose the eight schools?
So, for that particular training, for that particular project, we looked at number of EMLs, number of newly incoming EMLs, and chose some of our higher percentages, percentage schools for EMLs to provide that support. So, that's, you know, we haven't started yet, but we've been communicating with the schools since the spring. So, the schools know that they are receiving this additional support, where we have to train the teachers with the vendor, and that we will be working alongside our social studies content partners and our science content partners, because it's a collaborative effort, shared responsibility, hashtag. And so, we are going to be doing this together throughout the year. So, this summer is kind of the launch for the professional learning for this initiative.
Nice, and that is a tier-two?
Yes.
So, it's not mandatory?
So, it's, it's mandatory in that those, those teachers are coming, they, they know. Tier-two, tier-one is linked to your rate of pay. So, I also want to ensure that that is clear.
Now it is.
So, yeah, I was going to provide just a little bit of clarity. So, what I'm hearing from the board, and I think this is great, and thank you for, you know, I was listening to Ms. Yang's feedback. What we're going to do to follow up with the board is we're going to, we're going to create a very specific chart for you that says what the professional learning is. Is it tier-one or tier-two? So, you, because you know that language now. Who is the audience, the number of participants, when did it occur, and what was the cost? And we're going to put that all in a memo for you to follow up. The second thing I do want to just touch on is the cost differential. This is what is challenging when you're trying to provide professional learning in a district of 14,000 teachers. Tier-one training, we have to pay at the hourly rate of pay of the employee, okay? That's a lot of money. Tier-two training is, and correct me if I'm wrong, friends, $20 an hour. So, there is a, we have to be very thoughtful on who, how many are being trained at a tier-one rate of pay, which is why, obviously, when you're rolling out such a significant curriculum like CcalARA, yeah, we're going to, that's, that's, that's tier-one training. That's why that investment is so large. But some of the other training we do, we take, because the job-embedded ongoing training, we know is the most effective, that we take the approach of a trainer-of-trainer model, where we say, we're going to train the instructional leadership team, which is a smaller number of people, and they will bring it back to the teachers in their teams and departments at the schools, and then we'll plug in support as needed. So, that gets to a little bit about why you might not have a training, a tier-one training for 14,000 teachers, you know, on one topic. So, those are some of the decisions we have to make.
That makes sense, and I just, I just wondered how that looks like, the implementation of? The folks who do get the training, who then ensures that they are then passing on that knowledge to the folks at the certain schools that you, you know?
And I could let the team respond, but that, that gets to the whole implementation plan. I know with the ELD, they have action plans that are going to be specifically followed up on. And every professional learning is going to have impact reports. So, those impact reports follow, it doesn't end, you know, on tomorrow, if the training ends tomorrow, but they're going to be doing classroom observations. They're going to be having the conversations with the principals. That's where that collaboration with SSI, you know, comes into play. Ms. Hewlett, I didn't know if you wanted to?
Yeah, and I just think that calls on the waterfall that Ms. Logan, Dr. Logan presented. For our training, we know, we knew that we needed our administrators to be a part of the training, so that they are hearing, they're the ultimately who holds the teachers accountable for what is happening in instruction. It was important that our principals, our assistant principals, our assistant school administrators were in the training as well, to understand what it is that we are expecting our teachers to do. What tools are available? What does the data say? How do you make those decisions? What are the best practices? And now move forward. Sometimes, it's very easy to provide learning just for teachers without the administrator being a part of that and not, you know, closing that loop. But as a system, we're trying to make that intentional, those intentional moves with the waterfall, making sure it's touching every level. And as a central office, we are also making sure that we are in communication and understanding what the priorities are from our different departments and teams, so that, you know, while we sit on the curriculum side and program side, our partners in OSSI understand what it is that we are delivering to schools, and that they are therefore holding schools accountable for the learning and tools.
Okay, my last question would be for special education. And out of the 111 learning opportunities, how many of those are focused on the population of EML special education? Since we know this is one of the largest, fastest-growing population in special education.
So, we were with the Special Populations Committee a couple of months ago talking about the Rose Grant, reducing over-identification of students with disabilities. And we are focusing the funding we have for the Rose Grant on that training of our twice, our students who are two, who are EML and special education, are duly identified students. So, we've been able to utilize that funding with the consultants that are, that we've brought in to support that work. I did want to make one distinction, though, with special education and the tier-one versus tier-two. Most of ours is tier-one, because a lot of our professional learning is information that teachers need to know to do the job. So, we made a very intentional decision two years ago not to do very much tier-two. Now, reduce the number of teachers that we could actually participate. But when we're talking about things that require, that are required for compliance purposes, when we talk about interventions that need to be implemented in the classroom, behavior management, strategies, de-escalation, we made a decision that we wanted to ensure that teachers were being paid their hourly rate to participate in those. So, the majority of the 30 that we're providing are tier-one. But to your question, the focus, that's the focus of the Rose Grant. And so, we're working through our consultants this summer to provide that directed support on working with our duly-identified students.
Okay, but, but I guess my question is, are we right now, out of the 111, are we right now offering a, a professional learning option to the folks who are dealing with the high population of special ed and EML? Like, is one of the 111, one of those courses that people can take?
Yes, that's, that's, I was just making the point that?
That it was funded by the Rose Foundation? Oh, okay, well, that's great, okay.
Right, right.
Okay, and that's a tier-one?
Yes.
Okay, that's a tier-one. And so, the last, the last thing I'm going to ask is, okay, so, so we have all these different folks, right? And my question then is, where do paraeducators come into this picture? Because as we know, paraeducators spend a lot of time with our children in the classroom. And sometimes, it's only one teacher, and maybe it'd be two paraeducators, right? So, when we're, we're looking at having language for kids to be learning, especially the EML population, special EML and so on, where do paraeducators fit into this picture?
We agree that paraeducators are really in part, important part of this picture. Some of the professional learning we offer this summer, they can attend and get paid to attend. So, it just depends on the ability to fund that professional learning for them this summer. Other parts of it will then be offered in the school year. We offer training for paraeducators in the school year. We have found that training paraeducators in the summer isn't, we, we get better attendance during the school year. They're often supporting a lot of summer, summer school and have other jobs. And so, they prefer that we provide training to them during the school year. So, that's when we, we have trainers who will, who will do just that.
And I'll just add, there's been a lot of discussion recently about how to incorporate more opportunities for paraeducators. The challenge is, unlike with our teachers, if we can provide sub-coverage and do training during the school day, it is very, very difficult to do that with our paraeducators. So, there are some opportunities. After school hours, there's funding through Dr. Lopez's office to do some of that professional learning in October. There is a, an orientation for new paraeducators in January. They also have an opportunity for professional learning. But we are trying to figure out how we can do more to embed that during the school year.
Thank you. And then, the last thing I want to say, my, my dream one day would be that we also focus on the rest of the population of the schools, from our transportation folks on the school bus, to our wonderful cafeteria workers, to our support staff, you know, and, you know, to the front office. So, especially if you have a high number of a certain population, to actually have some of those skills to build on. And I think we had a presentation last year during the year, there was a school that actually implemented something similar, where there was a language thing, where everybody, from the, from the lady at the cafeteria to, you know, were able to encourage the development of language and so on. So, that is, that's my dream.
So, I want to highlight that, as an example, with the Department of Transportation, we do professional learning, because those are the folks that see our kids with IEPs first. And so, we want to ensure that they are cognizant of the needs of our students once they get on that bus in the morning. So, we have been doing professional learning for bus aides, as well as bus drivers, to ensure that they can provide the need, provide for the needs for our students with IEPs.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans?
Sure, so as I've been sitting here listening, I think some of my questions?
So as I've been sitting here listening, I think some of my questions kinda go away. When I think about in the very beginning, we asked the question of, how do we monitor the impact of professional learning? And as I was listening to you all, I feel like it's kinda ongoing. I don't know that you can monitor it immediately. But I did wanna ask the question, with the way we've made this change, do we have videos that people can access, so that if in that moment, when you're not around, and they might be at home thinking about what they're gonna do tomorrow, they can kinda go online and look at?
We, yes, we do have, we have some videos, and we're making more, and we're, we're really excited about it, because that, we are, we have that canvas page with the Equitable Teaching and Learning Framework there. And then with each of those core components, there are conditions that have teaching strategies aligned to them, and we are making videos that align to those strategies. So when you need that just-in-time professional learning, it's right there, and it has a guide for how you would implement that practice and a reflection tool. So how did it go? And here are some questions to think about and what to do next. We're really excited that we're building that up, and that will be a key feature of the District Wide Professional Learning Day again in October.
All right. And the other thing is, so as we go into the school year, and we're gonna be doing the progress monitoring, I know that there have been times when we refer back, like, so we might have schools come and share, like, their work. So I know that's them taking the plans they developed over the summer and put into implementation, and they share us the good news or the gains that they're making. Can we, in one of our presentations, have a school where we kinda have a flashlight on them, not a sledgehammer, but we're showing where they made some plans in the summer, but had to shift and change course? I don't know if we, I'm certain that we probably have schools that come forward that do that, but I think if we can be more specific in that moment to say, you know what, what they thought was gonna work out, or what the plans that were created for this school over the summer, we thought this was gonna be the way to go, but at some point, this is the thing that came up or popped up in the sit meeting, and we made a change. It would be great for not only the board members, but just the various community members that are watching, to hear, like, the deliberateness and the intentionality behind the work, and to show that, you know, we make shifts, and we don't mind saying that we had to change course, but here's what it looked like. Because I know we do that, but I don't know if we always pointed out, and I think in this moment right now, we're gonna need to point out the times that we've decided that it just was more beneficial to go in a different direction than what we thought. But it was as a result of the professional development and the training that people received, that helped them to know that this is something different that we might need to do or change. I think that would be helpful, to see something like that as well. But for our schools to know, I'm gonna let our principals know, I'm not trying to put anybody on notice. But we wanna see the work that's happening, and we wanna understand the, you know, the difficulties that, that might come out, or the challenges, I should say, and how they go about approaching, making those, those shifts, and the challenges that they might come across.
Great, yep, thank you. We'll work on that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Savanna?
So just a quick question, sort of echoing Ms. Rivera Owen's comments. So I, I kinda got lost for a second there. Do paraeducators receive tier one training?
There's a small percentage of professional learning we offer for paraeducators to receive some tier one training, but not much.
Okay. So do, would temporary part-time paraeducators receive?
No.
Got it, thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, thank you. So I'm looking at Slide 10, and at your adult learning sequence, and just two questions for me, going from the bottom up. At the second level, it's, you're talking about assess participant reaction and satisfaction with the learning process. And as a former teacher who had to take summer learning in MCPS, very, I feel very strongly that every professional development opportunity, especially ones that we require staff, any staff member to take, we need to make sure that they, that that was a valuable use of their time, and they think that when they're done. This is a good, it was well-delivered, it was insightful, I got, I gained new skills, I got whatever. So how are we assessing this participant reaction and satisfaction?
We are collecting that feedback after every session. We created a common evaluation that we're using across all professional learning that we offer. So the day after that session ends, we send out an email that, please take five minutes to complete this evaluation, and then we at the, we look at that at a, at a district level, and then we chop it up and give it to every person who delivered that specific professional learning, so they can reflect on it.
And are we making, are they, you know, part of the, the cycle is, you know, formative evaluation, your evaluation eating as you're, as you're implementing, and then you're making changes that you need as you go?
Exactly.
And so we are using this in that sort of formative way?
Exactly.
Taking that feedback and making real-time adjustments and changes. Okay. And then the very top of your pyramid is assessing the impact on student learning and experience. So how are we doing that to make sure that all of this professional learning that we're doing, which you have been very clear, is a very big financial lift for the system, is, is a good use of those resources? How are we making sure that it is realizing gains in, in student achievement?
So that is, that's a work in progress to look at that. You can't see it right away, right? So we need to look at, you know, the observational feedback. First of all, are teachers implementing the professional learning as we, as we intended? Did it work? And then to what extent is it having an impact on students? So we should start to see that as, as schools achieve their SIP goals, as we see changes in, in student achievement levels. And we, we're, we're tracking that, and principals are tracking that, and we will be monitoring it over the course of the school year.
Okay. Because I do have strong interest in seeing-
Correlation.
So what now? So, so we get these teachers, whether it's tier one or tier two training that they're doing over the summer, whether you are, you know, part of the ILT, and then you're going back and you're training your team, or you were a, a boots-on-the-ground educator in a classroom, you took some training, and then as we are going into these classrooms, we're looking for the implementation of those skills and strategies. I would be very interested in seeing what, what that, what we're seeing. And are we seeing uptake of these, of these methodologies? And, and then what it's, as, as the school year rolls along? So I assume we're doing this on an ongoing basis. We're not waiting till the end of school year and looking back, but, but because we, you know, kids only get one chance in these classrooms, so we wanna really make sure we're doing the best job we can for them, and, and as we go. So if we can see in, you know, a chart, a graph, an update as the year goes on, I'd be very, very interested to see how the uptake is of these skills that we're, we're really focusing on in this summer learning, which I think is so important. And then the, the last piece for me, one of the things that I, I think a lot of us hear about, from parents particularly, is as our, the demographic of our school population of learners evolves, and we're seeing more and more students with special needs, we're seeing more and more students who are emergent multilingual learners, and then we are, we're hearing from parents who, whose kids are in none of those categories, and they're feeling like, when their kid is in a classroom, their, their child, their student, isn't getting a lot of enrichment, isn't getting a lot of sort of encouragement and independent, you know, attention, because the teachers are very much taken up with addressing the needs of students who are learning the language in addition to the content, who do have special needs in the classroom. And so as we've moved, you know, after the MET study in 2015, we started universally screening students for enrichment. And, and so we have far more demand than supply for our truly enriched learning opportunities, like the Center for Enriched Studies, if you're an elementary school student, or one of the fine arts, or math, science magnets, if you're in middle school. And we, we say, we're providing enrichment at every school for any student who needs it, but we're hearing from parents who are saying that is not the case. So is this summer learning going to help teachers in the classroom be better able to truly differentiate instruction, so students who really need enrichment but aren't in a, a special setting, to get that challenge and enrichment?
So thank you for that question. So yes, and it, it just starts with this summer, and this is a part of our ongoing professional learning. As I said, with our instructional priorities, through the lens of taking a look at students in our special populations, well, one of the special populations that we've focused on in the instructional priorities is thinking about our highly able learners, but also thinking about how teachers are providing opportunities for enrichment for all students. That's called out in our required training for all administrators, and it's a focus when we think about supporting all students through our instructional priorities. So that is an ongoing goal for us, when we look through that lens of supporting the different needs of our learners in the classroom across all of our content areas. So it's this summer in our instructional priorities, and remember, that is the, the through line, that's our focus for our ongoing leader learning that's gonna be happening on a quarterly basis, our monthly professional learning that happens with our leaders at different levels throughout the school year, and our progress monitoring that will be happening in collaboration with school support and improvement, when we go into the classrooms and we're looking, we're providing that feedback, that waterfall. And so absolutely, this is an area that we've heard from teachers, too, that they need more strategies to be able to know how to do that in an effective way.
So if I'm the principal at a, a large middle school with a very diverse population, and I'm getting peppered by, by parents, because they're saying, look, my kid isn't getting any enrichment, my kid is bored all the time, my kid doesn't wanna go to school anymore, because they say, you know, they're done with their classroom in 10 minutes, and then they just sit there, and they don't have anything else to do. And I'm that principal, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm going to my staff, I'm asking them, you know, what's, what's their perspective of the feedback that the principal is receiving from family, and how they're, you know, what's going on in their classroom. But is there something, can that principal also call your office and say, can you come out and help us sort of address some of these concerns and make sure that we are providing the opportunities for students that we say we are?
Absolutely, and, and they have. So we encourage them not only to do that, so we're doing it through professional learning, and then we go out. So we have our instructional specialists, we can come out and support teams, we can come out and observe classrooms and provide feedback, whatever the needs are, or just meet with the principal and the administrative team and talk through what some of those concerns are that they're receiving. We're here to support them in that way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Savanna?
Sorry, I, I would just like to circle back for a second. So you had mentioned earlier that a small percentage of paraeducators receive tier one training. If you have it, what percentage of those paraeducators receive tier one training? And if it's not available at the moment, just follow up later.
Yep, we'll follow up with you later to give you the exact.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I don't have that data, but I did wanna circle back to the question you had about temporary part-time. Those paraeducators are working for a specific purpose and service to meet a student or a group of students' needs. And so while we don't provide tier one or tier two professional learning in the summer for them, once they come onboard, so if a student, for, for example, that has a medical need, they're trained to support that student. So they have very specific tasks that they're required to do based on what's in a student's IEP, what services they may need to provide, or if they're working with a group of students, they, we may come in and do that embedded, job embedded coaching and professional learning, so that they can meet those specific needs.
Got it, thank you. So from what, from what I'm understanding, you're saying that TPT employees are, are there for specific purposes, which is why they don't necessarily warrant tier one, tier two training?
But they get their own training for their specific task.
Thank you.
Okay. My final question, and you may not know it, but I see, you can get back to me, is, is this topic of professional learning one of our program budget themes?
Yes, it is in the program budget. I know I have, I see Ms. Savanna, yes, I'm just making sure, she's nodding her head. Yes, professional learning is in the program budget.
Okay, great. So that's, that's gonna be very helpful for the community and for the board to see everywhere that the, the budget supports professional learning throughout the system. And I wanna thank everyone again for the presentation. This is an important lever, right? The adult learning experience, our, our staff need to be constantly learning, new curriculum. We need everybody to understand how to teach emergent multilingual learners. Everyone needs to know how to teach special education students. Everyone needs to know how to teach the, the students that need enriched instruction. So it is an important lever in order for us to improve our student achievement scores, and it's a big investment. So thank you so much for the presentation, and I can tell that we are evolving and we are improving from previous years, when we weren't assessing the impact on the student learning experience, where it was a one and done, and we weren't really tagging it back to going, the, the job embedded coaching. So I see progress here, and I wanna thank you all for your hard work in moving the system along to getting to a better place in terms of our professional learning. So thank you. Okay, so we are now to item number 10, which is for informational purposes only. I'm gonna ask if we can move 11-1 and 11-3 in block.
So move?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. That's unanimous. For 11.4, we have a resolution. It's the appointment of student member of the board to the committees. So I'm going to read the resolve. That the student member of the board, Pranil Savanna, be appointed to serve as a member of the board's policy management committee until his term ends on June 30th, 2025, and be it further resolved that the composition of the board's policy management committee be modified until June 30th, 2025, to allow the student member of the board, Pranil Savanna, to serve as a fourth member of the board's policy management committee until his term expires.
Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Sorry, Ms. Harris, I will not be joining you in fiscal management, as you had told. Okay, item 11-5, board members, do you have any new business items to bring forward?
Just very quickly, just wanted to say thank you for the good wishes while I was out having surgery, and that was the reason why I wasn't here last time, because I know a lot of people care quite a lot that I was not here. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Item number 12 on our agenda is for informational purposes only, and item 13, may, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Strong second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. We are now adjourned.